Good evening, I'm calling the meeting back to order. We were previously convened in the closed session. And we are now into open session. And for all of those that are able, I ask you to please stand and join me in the line.
I pledge allegiance to the UFLI of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Thank you. We have to get started tonight with spotlight on education. That would be Mr. Johnson.
Kelly, come on up.
Mr. Johnson.
I told Kelly she does not have to do... Mr. Johnson, come on up. I tell you guys to stand up here.
Right up here with me, Kelly. I'm trying to be student-oriented.
Yeah, I'm going to flex at the camera right here. I don't know if you guys saw her article in the Amory Free Press, but it was a pretty cool article that I think told her story with pole vaulting. So as you guys are all aware, we have a state champion next to us right now. We're in good hands. Kelly's a humble kid. Even when we did our national signing days and whatnot, she doesn't necessarily want to be in the spotlight. So this is just an opportunity for us to kind of recognize her. Came in as a freshman and placed sixth at the state tournament. Sophomore year was a third-place finisher, junior year second place. And she had a lot of pressure, faced a lot of adversity. This last year with some injuries in her training. And I can't even imagine what was going through her head because the target was on her back. She wanted to be a state champion. And I don't know if you guys are familiar with how pole vaulting works, but they get three opportunities at heights. And there was a couple of times where Kelly missed the first two and now comes down to the final vault. And her parents could probably attest to the pressure that they were experiencing, let alone Kelly. And I don't know all the thought process with the different poles and mechanics, but I know that there's a lot that can go wrong in a vault. And Kelly was able to figure it out, we'll say, and muscle her way over. She wasn't too pleased with her mechanics behind it and her form, but she was a state champion vaulting 12 feet 6 inches, which is a new school record. So congratulations to her with that. She held a previous school record with, what, was it 11-9?
Yeah.
11-9. Oh, so super impressive. Had a heck of a career. Great kid. She's our FCCC president. She was at that year in Queens. Never had a behavior referral in her high school career.
It's a good thing, I think she could take you.
Yeah. So congratulations, Kelly. Next year, she's going to Western Illinois. She's going to pole vault for the Leathernecks. We were just talking, she just had practice. And she's got USA Track this summer and competition never stops. So super proud of Kelly. I think her career really is just getting started. She's going to go there, she's going to focus on her form and her mechanics and it'll be interesting to see what these next four years bring her. So congratulations, Kelly. You guys can actually leave now. You guys don't have to stand.
Yeah.
Not from the bottom.
Yeah, definitely.
You're good.
Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Congratulations. Pretty awesome. We'll be following along.
Congrats. Thanks.
Tough girl there. All right, consent agenda items. Steve, is that you and Larry?
Yeah, so Larry and I reviewed stuff tonight. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary. Larry?
All good.
All good? So with that, we'd like to make a motion to approve all the consent agenda items.
Is there a second?
Second.
One, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda items as presented. Is there any discussion? And then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting and approving the consent agenda items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Consent agenda items are approved. Next up, administrative and community department reports.
All right, well, as you can imagine, it's pretty quiet at the high schools right now. But we, in addition to recognition for Kelly, FFA has some state championship teams there with the parlay pro and the quiz bowl teams and junior quiz bowl teams. So exciting stuff for FFA, keeping the longstanding traditions going there. It's parade season. We've got sports camps going out like crazy. Wherever you look, kids all over the building there. And then we're just kind of closing up some loose ends on the remodel of the high school and trying to do some beautification projects, I would say.
Good. It is summer, I guess. There's not a whole lot to report of. Jeff?
Intermediate school. So before the end of the school year, we actually had transition meetings. So it's important to us that our students that are coming over to this building, as well as just transitioning from third, fourth, fifth, and fifth, is that they get to meet their new teacher and get to know them, you know, before they start, hopefully easing a little bit of anxiety as they go into summer. They don't know who their classroom teachers are. But we did spend some time before the end of the year where they got to meet and greet their next teacher that they move on to. As well as second grade came over here and visited their third-grade teachers. That's a big week for them, the new buildings. They did get a tour of the building as well. They got a snack, they got to meet me there to read aloud. So hopefully that eases a little bit of worries as well. And then also our Montessori students came over and visited. So the third grade coming over next year, as well as fourth graders incoming, we did have them visit. That seems to be great support for all of our kids. We've already had some grade level work, some summer department work that's been happening. So we will be vetting new resources for a K-5 math curriculum in two years. And so we have already started that work. So our math chairs at the elementary and the intermediate have already spent a lot of time together this summer looking at the scope and sequence and the DPI standards alignment, just making sure that we are not missing any essential standards that we need to identify. So that's been work that's been going on already. We had a UFLI training that stands for the University of Florida Literacy Institute. That is a program that is greatly supported by Act 20. And so in the past, we've actually sent several teachers to CISA to get trained in UFLI. And we were very fortunate enough to actually bring their literacy specialists here. And so with that, rather than sending one, two, or three people to get trained, we actually were able to train 22 teachers in UFLI. Our hope is that this will continue to be a resource at a Tier 1 level, so meaning general instruction at our K-2 building, but then also here, it's an RTI resource. So if a student has some gaps in foundational reading skills, this is a program we would use to close that. So the 22 people that came, we had great feedback. They all got the resource. Next, the incoming principal at the elementary will sit down and we'll talk about how we're going to use that resource. But to have that knowledge and that training is really big. Our educators are very fortunate to have that. Summer school is in full swing. Week two, this is at the elementary school. And swim lessons are starting today as well. At least that's what my neighbor tells me. And then finally, the Solution Tree PLC at Work Institute. So we have gone to that several years. That's in Minneapolis. Abby and myself took six educators, a couple from each building, to the PLC Institute in Minneapolis. And they're, it's run by Solution Tree and it is your top of the top when it comes to educational leadership in response to intervention and professional learning communities. So we were fortunate to go for three days and take a group of educators there. It's fun to come back and see how excited they are, implement the things that they learned, and just the conversations on the way home and what we do next. So that was a great experience. So thank you to the district for supporting that. And that's it here at PIS.
It benefits everybody, for sure. So happy to support that.
Okay, well, the epicenter of summer school stuff happens at the elementary school. And we're in full swing there as well, in week two as well. We have five total sessions, so we meet through the end of the month for summer school. I'm up to the 4th of July, then we have two sessions in summer in the month of August. Really tricky at the elementary to get the building cleaned, to have club hours and to do summer school at the same time. So we've had many meetings about how to artificially schedule that so everyone can be out of the way of each other, so to speak. Laura Shogren does an excellent job. George Siggsberg does an excellent job. And the elementary staff do an excellent job of making it happen. At the top of that list are the elementary custodians because they bear much of the burden of how to make this work because they're the ones having to work behind the scenes to get classrooms cleaned and get classrooms moved. And they've done an excellent job. We did something very new this year. The second item on my list here is the elementary school hot dunk. And the reason we haven't done it before is because we didn't have the building we have now. So we broke up the building into two parts. If you remember in the past, for those who attended this event, we had in the parking lot behind school, which was not the front entrance at that point in time. We had, that's where our picnic was. And we had a really hard time keeping track of our kids because some of them went to the playground. Some of them went home with their parents. Some of them were still eating. And some of them were heading back in the building. So we split them into two bunches. We had a batch in the front, and there's no vehicular traffic out there other than buses in the middle of the day, so there weren't any buses. And then the other half went to the 4KK playground. And it was a huge success. So you could navigate the building better with kids because you separated them off developmentally and separated the parents off. It was just a much smoother process. Everyone reported it was a much better event than it's ever been. And we just didn't have a chance to do it this way until now. We had 600 parents total. So 600 total people, parents and family members. So huge success. It was a very, very good event. Classroom movement, we have about 12 people changing classrooms based on simply the needs of the building, moving folks around, making sure we have the right number of people for a grade level, and the other things that we offer kids beyond the classroom experience. So that, that's already been done. They all boxed up on that last day in service and in before. And the custodians literally the week after moved all of that stuff to where it needs to be. So there isn't any other movement that needs to occur. So once the classroom is clean and it's not being used by summer school, they're moving in. Hopefully it will be a much more settled picture of moves in the future. But the elementary custodial staff did a fantastic job. And the last, this is my last official board report from the elementary. And I hope for the district's sake that it is my last official board report as the elementary principal. I am very excited to begin working with Megan Challander, our new elementary school principal. And I know what the staff is and the administrative and district team are as well. So this is, as my board report says, this is Sean Gerfler signing off as the new elementary school principal. So there it is.
Well, thanks for stepping into that role. It's been, it's been quite an adjustment for everyone.
Me too.
You're everyone.
I've got quite an education. There are many things that elementary school kids say to you that you have to take a bit of process because I'm not really sure what they're talking about.
We're really excited to have Megan start. And I'm sure she'll be here in July.
She's already been.
And giving the next board report. So we're very excited to welcome her on tonight. I hope the parents are very excited to see her as well. So it'll be, that'll be fun.
Yeah, okay, so indicator 14, that's one of our special education indicators through DPI. And this is one of my favorite ones to participate in. So it includes us as a district calling all students who are Spur NAB who graduated a year ago now. And we have to do a survey on what they've been doing for work, are going to school, are they taking over their financial situation, are they taking over the healthcare? So we get to talk with the graduates or their family members and ask questions. So I am actually doing those surveys this summer. And we get a reimbursement for that, but started today and had some fun conversations. So it's always just fun to hear what they're up to. We also are kind of improving our adaptive FIAED services that we have in the district. We need to kind of make them a little bit more robust. So I met with the FIAED team on that last day of school, staff in-service, and we talked about what it could look like, what it should look like. We got some assessment documents put together. So I was super excited after I left that meeting because I wasn't sure. And they were hitting the ground running already without me. So I'm excited to see some services kind of put back in place for some students. And Jess kind of talked about our EdClimber training that we've been doing as an admin team, being that ready, and then the PLC Institute. And a big thank you for letting us go to that. My first time, actually. I've never been to one as a teacher or a director. And so, well, it was incredible. It was still good.
Good benefits. All right, thanks, you guys. See, even in summer, still busy. All right, off to the achievement gap reduction reports with Mrs. D'Amrojo and Dr. Durk.
Sure, I can start. So each year, we look at the achievement gap reduction report. So the AGI report is a program that allows participating schools to have some, have some funding to be able to allocate, to be able to support readers. And so via this program, we are to implement one of three rationale strategies of what are we going to do to commit to closing gaps within our K-2, three students. And so our commitment has been three. We only have to do one of these, but we do do three. And so our commitment as a district is to do smaller class sizes, professional development, rigorous curriculum, and then also finally small group instruction. So that would be your RTI time. So we use FastBridge as our assessment system. You'll notice the K-1 students have a different assessment. They have early reading, English, and early math. And then second grade, we have FastBridge. It should say A reading and A math. Those are the screeners that we use. So we did talk about the fall data. I believe we talked about that in January or February. And then we come to after spring benchmark. And so here we are at spring benchmark time, talking about the growth that was made. So as you can see, when we look at kindergarten, that's your first row, starting at 89%, going to 64%, 84% in math, and going to 81%. So our goal as a district is 80% of our students will be at or above the 30th percentile. Many districts, many screeners do the 20th percentile. So from 0 to 19.99 would be considered a student that is very high-risk. High-risk in terms of reading and math. We take it upon ourselves to include that 20% to that 30%. That drives what we do. That drives our response to intervention. That is our goal as a district, is that the 30th percentile is what we go for. So it's a, it's a high benchmark, but it's something that we've historically done as long as Cheryl was here reporting too. And then when she mentored me as well, we continue with that percentile. So you can see the gains that were made or not made. Looking at this, you know, we had some reduction in students that achieved that percentile. I spent time with Kiri Shu, who's our reading specialist, as well as Mr. Durk. We're just talking about some strategies that we can implement, but then also understanding that in a FastBridge assessment, you are not assessed in the fall with the goal of being the spring assessment. It's computer adaptive, curriculum-based measures. So that means that as a student learns, computers adapting to what the end goal would be. So some students that take these assessments will end much sooner than another student that will be pushed further on. And then the program will actually do a ROI, as called, which is a rate of improvement. So what is their personal is goal when they're done. So we look at that a lot. We use FastBridge three times a year. You will see two, two times a year reported here. So I shared with you kindergarten, first grade. When you look at reading in the fall, we had 74% of our students at or above the 30th percentile. When we finished the year, we had 52% of our students at or above that 30th. In mathematics, we started the year at 79%. And the end of the year was 71% at or above. Second grade reading, we started at 61%, at or above the 30th, ended with 71% at or above the 30th. Mathematics, 74% in the fall, 83% at or above the 30th percentile. And then looking at third grade, which does include Montessori as well, in the fall, we had 59% at or above the 30th. In reading, it finished with 69%. And then in math, 80% at or above the 30th. And ended the year with 72% at or above the 30th percentile. So this data drives what we do. I'm looking forward to collaborating with Megan and with Kiri Shu to talk about instructional practices, response to intervention times, and groupings, just in terms of small group instruction during RTI. So I look forward to collaborating with them. I see a sliver of here at third grade, but it's important to me that we're looking at the K-2 instructional practices too. This is also us finishing up year three of HMH. And so that's very good support to us as well.
Do the, do the percentage drops surprise you? Or is the curriculum change enough that you, you would see a drop? Is it getting harder? I mean...
It does, right? The concepts, they, they do get harder as they go. I will say, when I look in particular at kindergarten, those are skill-based assessments. So that means when you come in the fall, you know, there's a benchmark of how many letters you should know in the fall. Obviously, that's going to increase in the spring. Letter identification in the spring for a kindergarten should be much higher. The words they know in the fall versus the spring should be much higher. And I would say the same for first grade. I always acknowledge that in first grade in particular, you know, students can come in, 74% of our kids can come in in the fall right where we need them to be. But the intense, first grade is a tough grade. That's where you learn to read. So the intensity from coming in and you need to know eight sight words to the end of the year, you're reading a chapter book. That's a huge gap, right? I mean, we're, that's a lot. That's a lot that we're asking our kids to learn to read. And not that they can't, but there's a lot of skill that goes into that. This, to me, was surprising to see where we ended in the spring. I think Megan and I are looking forward to collaborating and talking a lot about using the resource we now have three years under our belt, acknowledging that we have new staff that we need to circle back with and do some training on as well. But not to say that a lot of learning didn't happen. A lot of great things did happen in the year as well.
My estimation, having spent the last six months sort of at ground zero for what's taking place at the elementary as building principal, in the two years prior to this year, I think the elementary staff, up to and including the building principal, spent a lot of time chasing behaviors. And when you're chasing behaviors, you're going to have a very difficult time instructing your kids because it's learning loss. They're not in classroom, or they're off task while in classroom. And others are too, and teachers are as well, chasing behaviors. And that, I think, is playing out here in a poor way. We made a tremendous amount of progress in the last six months in regards to behaviors. Abby and I sit on what's referred to as an SST, which is a student success team. And we have whittled that list down to really just 10, 12 or so kids. And you're always going to have some kids that are going to have struggles behaviorally. And we are back at where we need to be in regards to on-point work with literacy of kids. And Megan Challander is going to take us places in a real big hurry. And it's going to be done not because of Megan, but it's going to be done because of her leadership of an excellent staff. That elementary staff knows how to teach. They just didn't have the ability to do it as much as they should have in those two years. That's my estimation. I could be wrong, but I don't think I am.
But that was my, my absolute initial reaction. You know, it wasn't a secret that when third grade started with us, two years ago, I shared with you just how impactful that was, right? That we were teaching kids how to go to school, that we were really trying to manage behaviors as incoming third graders. That that was something, that was a challenge for us. And, and so I would absolutely agree that behaviors have to come before academics, right? Kids can't stay in class and teachers can't focus on what they do and their expertise. That, that greatly impacts that.
And Jessica, you're not saying that as an excuse. It is not. I'm saying that as an explanation. And I could be wrong, but again, I don't think that I am. There's work to be done. Certainly.
I will agree to all of that. And I'll say that the third grade though has made great gains, even though we knew that that was a tough class. Yeah. Coming into this school. And then, of course, that transition from one building to another is always hard for kids, just in general. But then new expectations and even though we didn't hit that 80th, that 80% of the 30th percentile, we still saw great gains in that class in reading. Math, actually not so much of a decline if you're looking at just number of students. So that I would say is, you know, a win in and of itself to say that, you know, things are doing well here at the intermediate school. Obviously, there's been a lot of things going on at the, at the elementary school, a lot of roles and things that have changed. And I think we've made interventions for that to happen there, for things to get better. How does this, how do you feel about, I'm never one to lower the bar at the end. Has the end goals always stayed, has they stayed the same? Or have we gotten, has the bar gotten higher at the end goal in the spring, over the last several years?
This has generally been what's been in place for the better part of two decades.
Like, I know the parameters have been, but what I'm asking is like, what we're asking you to do. So if you have, if they're coming in and just learning how to know eight sight words to a chapter book, has it always been the end goal, a chapter book?
Yes.
Okay, so the end goals haven't changed.
Correct. And I do think, you know, I do think students are arriving in our district to our buildings with different skill sets than what we have seen. And so when we talk about new curriculum and pieces that are embedded in it, a lot of times we're going back because it is, it's a rigorous curriculum, which is great, but we are having to play a lot of catch-up with kids. And so what we notice as well is that gap gets, gets bigger. You've got some kids that come in with a lot of skill. You've got a group of really high-skilled kids. And then you've got, you know, a group of kids that really have really minimal skills. So that, that gap is getting bigger. And so I know Abby and I have talked a lot about too, just that small group response to intervention. So using our data to say, you know, Jess needs help on decoding, we're going to make a small group of kids over here that are going to decode. And we need to carve out time for that. And I'm thankful that we as a district have prioritized that. And so there are RTI times within that, but we need to build our toolbox too because kids are coming with different skills. So that UFLI training that I talked about earlier, training 22 people, is a lot. But that program is generally intended for a K-2 program. But what we're seeing is that we use it here in third grade for our readers. We're using it in fourth and fifth. We're talking about middle school teachers having it because, you know, kids just have gaps in their learning. And that's, that, that does present a challenge. I think most teachers would tell you that's one of the most challenging parts about their job is that you have, you know, a kid really high and you've got a kid that needs a lot of ability on how you, how do you bring those together and still teach a whole group of 18 kids at the same time?
And the social-emotional needs. We have kids coming with different needs than we used to have children. So I think that's what the impact is happening in classrooms. The teachers having to navigate those needs while trying to continue to raise academic.
And we're not alone.
No.
Right? Because this is the bottom for education.
With the ability of having several first-grade teachers, several second-grade teachers, is there an option, or maybe that just helped me kind of know what that day looks like? Is there options to grouping those, like similar ability kids with similar ability kids, even if it's not their classroom teacher, if they have to swap? Is there ability to do that, rather than just like having a whole, it's group of, I mean, I know it's kind of the same, but swapping instead?
They did that after the beginning of last year in math in second grade. Lynette Wentz took all of the kids that were struggling in math and she pulled them out. And they were four different maths, four different classrooms. Lynette had all of them. And she was remediating that group of kids in the area of mathematics. So it does happen. But you've got to be smart about it. Because that's not, that's a tough thing to make work well.
And actually, when I was teaching at the elementary, the schedule that was built there in Cheryl's time, it was called Wind Times. That stands for what I need now. So that was actually built in twice a day. And so for 30 minutes, two times a day, kids were going to groups based on skill level, which, which was fantastic. I mean, that, that was hugely impactful. Here, I give a ton of credit to my third-grade teachers here. When I arrived here four years ago, we weren't doing RTI. Didn't look like that. And so that actually, this is year two of a full implementation of RTI here. So meaning all of our third-grade teachers sit down with title and they say, this group of kids needs this, this needs this, this needs this. And so from 2:30 to 3:00, every day, Monday through Friday, each group, each teacher gets a different group of kids. You know, maybe one of theirs, or maybe five of someone else's, and they're all working on just that skill. So the grouping by ability is something huge. I, I do believe we got away from that, doing it twice at the elementary. And I will absolutely, I actually meet with Megan tomorrow, absolutely talk to her about are we using the RTI time as effectively as we could and looking at, looking at the master schedule to say, is there time that we can embed that back in? Because it, it does make it easier for teachers if I just have to focus on these five kills, kids with these five skills. Versus trying to, you know, have, have a whole eighteen that are in a different learning curve.
Yeah, it's so hard.
Yeah.
For the kids and, you know, frustrating for the kids and for, I think, our teachers. So, yeah, it'll be great to see what Megan, yeah, brings to the table. Obviously, you can't make decisions without her.
Right.
Input at this point, but that'll be the good thing about having her start very soon. You, you just talk, Larry.
Just talk?
Just talk, just talk over me. If you wait for me to see your hand up, you'll be waiting all night.
I know who the, who the person was in class back then, I'll tell you that.
When you have behavioral issues that are affecting the learning process and it's probably changes from classroom to classroom, a group of kids. Are, are you able to utilize aides to assist those teachers in addressing those behavioral issues or?
Well, I speak to the elementary, they're fantastic. Yes, absolutely. They are, they are, they are worth their weight in gold with the kid. Because they, absolutely, because they have relationships with kids that a classroom instructor may not have. And they will do all of that work and get them right back plugged in. Yes, absolutely.
But do we have an adequate supply of those people?
We have, or so, there's never an adequate supply based on the, the rising need of kids. But I believe we're well-staffed in the area of aides, whether it be in a general ed class or a special ed class. I can't speak to the intermediate, but I know there's, they're worth their weight in gold too.
I would absolutely agree. I would absolutely agree. We have really great systems of, of behavior. Abby's been nothing but a huge asset in her team as well. And so we do, we do have our systems in place when a student is dysregulated or in support that we, we absolutely have that system.
Because I would imagine a small number of students causing problems could affect the whole classroom.
I've always, I've always said it's not how many you've got, it's who you've got, you know? And you could have the wrong two or three and you're gonna be trouble.
But just with the theme of the academic, RTI, we have a behavior system put in place to help respond. Our counselors are fantastic in responding to students who have some needs and so those pieces are put in place too to help respond to that.
And so here at V I S, two hundred and seventy-six kids, we, in Title One, so that means mostly reading, students that, that needed additional supports. We were servicing in a year, in, in, in one day, we were servicing eighty-nine kids a day in Title. So one-third of our students were getting Title One services with a really highly qualified instructor, which we hear this building, too, at the elementary. But, you know, kids are just, they're, they're presenting differently and so how do we build those supports in and realizing that they bring a lot from home as well? That's on their plate and how do we love them and teach them and then close the gap that we need to get, or is it?
It's a big challenge.
It is.
I'm gonna ask an unpopular question, but I don't need anything negative by it, but is there any reflection of the teachers in this?
There has not been yet. I, I look forward to meeting with Megan. I do think, having her well aware of our, of our data, again, you know, my role, director of curriculum instruction, is to look at this as a whole and say, how are our structural practices, what are our resources? So that's gonna be really important, is to sit down with Megan and say, you know, this is what we have, this is what we need to do. But I do think it's important to have a conversation with the K-33 teachers to say, why, why do you think? What did you see, right? How are we functioning? And, and knowing that we're in year three of, of H M H, I feel very lucky that there's generally something called a curriculum dip. So they say the first two years of a new curriculum, you will see a dip in your scores. We did not see that year one and two. The program was familiar to us, we have a lot of professional development, so this is the first time that I've seen, I've seen a dip. And, and, you know, I do think it requires us to go back to the drawing board just and reflect, right? Just reflect on what our practices and Megan will be a big part of that, but then also have teachers be a big part of that.
Yeah, and am I suggesting there, that there's bad teachers here and suggesting that, are, is there, can the data lead you to identifying a teacher that just might need some additional training or, or services to help move that number forward?
Some, something that's a big piece, P L C, that, that we went to, it was really finding your, so we should be looking at data and we should be able to look at a class and say, you know, this class really performed well on this assessment. And rather than going and saying, what are the kids doing? You actually go back and you say, how did this teacher teach it? Because man, they rocked it, right? So this teacher did really well, now we need to use this teacher to model for the other teachers what they did. And so we always, the answer's in the rule, we have in-house experts. Now it's just finding that time and creating that environment where we can put staff together to say, you know, Steve's really good at teaching this and Jess is really good at teaching this, so let's go in and let's watch each other. You know, that hasn't been happening, I will say at the elementary, that hasn't been happening. And so we do need to get back to that, that, that point of finding our experts inside and letting them model what's working really well.
And that's the whole idea of those PLCs, that are part of that big three that we talked about. And that has to happen at every building all the time. It has to, it just has to happen. We'll be actually meeting as a board and discussing more about that in July as well. And you'll be hearing obviously more about that as an administrative team and we look forward to keep building those things too, so.
The best thing is another, is another educator by far, right? When I, when I get to collaborate with another leader, I'm just, I'm so excited because they bring things that you just don't see, so, so, yeah. It's a great idea.
I have another question, how that, how this would translate to Act Twenty, but I'll, I'll hold off on that till we get to Act Twenty. There are other people in the room that would like to leave tonight.
Speaking to that, is it possible to move up these two gentlemen over here, Jeff and Dylan?
I have, I have no problem.
The committee for used to was much less long, we already covered the last year.
I know, I feel bad for them.
And your presentation will be more likely than these two. Okay, I don't know, that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, is there any objection to moving Lead Home up tonight for that liability?
Moving these guys?
No, moving Jeff and Dylan up.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh.
Hold it up.
Please, Kevin.
We'll sit in the corner for a while.
Any, any objections to that, maybe Jeff that's nice, you're a little off schedule? Any objections? Okay, we will, we will carry on with that. Is there any more discussion on the achievement gap report for Jessica or Sean? All right, and then we'll move on to, where are you, the W I A A membership renewal? I have to look, it's a long agenda to do. I do have to make a little side note as you make your way to the podium, is that there, okay, maybe Becky and John are tag teaming this camera operator tonight, but we are missing our regular camera operator. So for those that are going to be watching this online later or on cable TV later, and I know people do. You don't generally, you generally get to see what's on the screen and I don't know that that's coming through tonight, is that right Becky?
That's correct, it's not.
So it's, it's just because we're missing our normal camera operator. And so all of these documents can be found in the board book or be given upon request, if anybody wants to see these documents. But that's, that's the only difference tonight in the broadcast, if you're watching this later, so. Okay, W I A A membership renewal?
So we'll try to articulate it well here. So we have twenty different sports on the screen right now that we are looking to compete next year per the W I A A. Dylan wants a job next year too. So this is just an annual blessing that we need from the board. There's nothing new in terms of what we're adding, that the last sport we added was girls wrestling. And we had three girls wrestlers last year and we had a female head coach, so promising. I would say in the world of athletics, some schools do not have girls wrestling, some schools are pushing a full roster. We're kind of in between there as we look to grow that program. I will say with our enrollment, we do offer as many sports as we can in the Middle Border Conference. We do have some areas, we're always looking to increase our numbers. It's kind of like an ongoing battle. There's roughly seventy coaches that take up those twenty programs along with middle school. And I think we're in a really good spot with our coaching vacancies at this point, so.
Just remember, Dylan will still have a job, there's other duties that you have, other.
True.
You have other things to do. So obviously every year, every school district has, it has to make a motion and decide whether they are going to be participants and members of the W I A A. That per our policy then tells us that we are subject to all of the W I A A regulations and rules going forward in sports. So whatever their rulings are of who participates, how it's participated in, and what their rulings are versus, I want to say, admission, enrollment, eligibility, tournament play, all of those things, the school district relinquishes that control to the W I A A. So they have the final word. And I just wanted to make, obviously Larry and April has participated in this conversation before, so wanted to make you two aware of how that works. Obviously, there are issues across the board of sports and athletics. And if that, if anybody wanted to address that at this point, that would be the time, but this would be your time to think about that we do relinquish that control to the W I A A.
I would just add, if we don't participate in the W I A, there's nobody to play.
That's correct.
I just want to make sure that.
I don't see a legitimate alternative.
A lot of scrimmaging.
Yeah, yeah, and it would be like, and when you talk about scrimmaging, it's literally you're just your own school playing your own school. Because I believe, you can help me out with this if I'm wrong, but if you are a member of the W I A A as a school district, you can't, can you participate outside of the W I A A in scrimmages?
There's student, there's certain rules and regulations, like you track, that can go to two events that are not in W I A sanctioned. But there's a lot of restrictions, eligibility nuances, there's situations every year that you guys will probably hear of as school board members that we literally have no control over and the W I A is making overarching decisions. So we do defer to them, but it's part of, being a part of their membership. They'll admit it's not perfect, but it gives us an opportunity to play and compete.
My recommendation would be to vote yes. That's a safe recommendation.
It is. I just want to, I just want to be completely transparent and I'll just, I mean, if anybody wanted to have that conversation, this is the time to have it because we only vote on this once. And I don't know that you can pull your membership to the W I A A mid-season, I don't know that that's ever been done. So I just wanna, I just want to have that.
I guess a better question would be is, as, as an athletic director, do all the athletic directors get together and meet and have conversations about? I mean, do you have any driving information that you share with W I A A leadership?
Yeah, so we, we have like, we have been to border conference meetings six times out of the school year. We also attend like conferences throughout the year. And then we also have a W I A membership meeting that we travel to Stevens Point and hot topics will be presented and then we vote on as a membership. Might be coaching contact days is a recent change in the W I A. A lot of times people will give the W I A flack on their stance on something. I can tell you that they just facilitate conversations and the membership folds. So NIL is another one. So yes, we do have conversations throughout the year and there are avenues to relating information.
So, so to the point of, you know, some of the conversations that we had about some things that went on last year with W I A, W I A. It's not that, it's not that we're completely excluded from having a potential voice in changing the direction of the W I A.
The membership has a vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, the membership.
Yeah, it's meant to represent it, right?
So I just hope those conversations are, are happening and that the leadership is really taking those conversations under.
And there's a board of control in, in, in my world and there are representatives from this C seven are on the board of control in Madison.
Every year, go to superintendent from the left.
And prior to that, Eric Russell, Don Molten.
Brian Dill, who is Ellsworth Superintendent.
Yep, Ellsworth, yep.
There's coaches committees, there's, there's a lot.
Very expensive network.
Yeah, so that's good, right, because I think that there might be a thought out there that W I A just does its thing and you're completely complicit. You have to listen to it and if you're, otherwise, sorry, you can figure something else out, right? But knowing that there's a, an opportunity for a voice out there, I would make a motion and move forward with it again.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept W I A A membership renewal. I'm going to ask for any further discussion and that discussion is going to be led quickly by me. Jeff, can you speak to N I L concerns at the high school level, what those rulings have looked like now with W I A A? Do you have any information on that?
So in April, the W I A approved the N I L and the membership voted for it. And two years ago, we voted for it, but it was very new information. It was sprung on us, I would say, the month before we actually voted and people were really uncomfortable. If we didn't vote this through, the state was gonna come through with their ruling and it would've been really vague. Currently, there's a ton of restrictions on N I L. So you can't be a graduate of Amory, give a N I L deal, you can't have ever donated money to the school district. You can't wear your Amory uniform. I'm, I'm trying to think of ways where you could receive money and be an athlete and be eligible to play W I A Athletics. One thing I thought of is if you play for like a club team and somebody purchases your uniform that has no connection to the school district, has never graduated premier, has never donated, that would potentially be a possibility, but it can't be Amory gear. We will not have people driving Chevy Silverados in Amory chef into school because they're a premier athlete. But there's just a ton of restrictions in there was, there was a lot of urgency to pass it because they wanted to make it super restrictive. If they felt like if the state came out with their N I L recommendation and passed it, it would be very open and it would be a little bit of a circus like you can't see in the collegiate athletics world.
No way, they'd tell me that the state would be vague? No way!
Yeah.
I'm very, I believe in that. Do we see any impact moving forward on, at like, on athletes moving, school districts, anything for their name, image like this? I mean, it just doesn't.
I, I think it's really new to everybody right now. I think we're trying to see how this is gonna fit in, I'll say rural Wisconsin, small town Wisconsin. We will update our athletic code with some verbiage in there recommended from the W I A, the Middle Ward Conference. We do have a consultant that if we do run into an N I L situation with a student athlete, we can work with the consultant to make sure we're in compliance.
I think the biggest is broker out the issues happening at the college level before they do the high school level.
Well, that's why.
Because college level is a circus beyond belief right now.
Well, and that, that's why I asked because they're just that whole, that whole circus that extends around that. And then obviously we've pumped out some pretty good athletes lately, I mean, we just, you know, I had Cal here tonight, you know, we look at Luchdi, we look at, we've got an Olympic wrestler. I mean, we've, we've pumped out some pretty good athletes. So I'm just wondering what that impact would look like to the district.
So I think it's still, I think it's still really new. And, you know, the athletic characters continue to have long ideas off of each other, but I don't believe we actually have a single athlete that is, that we've shared information with at that time. I think the hardest thing is, is to communicate with us that they may or may not be involved in an N I L situation. You know, so you can't just kind of like go and do your own thing, you know, we gotta make sure that you're in compliance and following the, not that there's not an option for it, there, there is, but it's super restrictive.
And if they don't report that, does that make them ineligible for?
If they're in violation, yep.
Okay, because we'd hate to enter into that situation and then all of a sudden something happened and, you know, but I, I would assume.
And even there's like, there's, there was a parent meeting, okay? So we had the consultant facilitate a parent meeting, so we can, of course, no parents attended the meeting, but we can send that video out. I don't know how many people will watch the video, but maybe having a NIL resource on our webpage could be beneficial. The big thing is to just come to us and have a conversation and then we, because we're gonna need some professional development on that as well, so.
Okay, well, lots of changes, lots of things are still up in the air.
Yep.
Any other discussion on the W I A A membership approval? During then, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of redoing our W I A A membership, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Dylan, you got a pretty good job.
Nice, thank you guys.
Mr. Fur, thanks for your service and we wish you well, your, your contract is over on two thirtieth and you're leaving us for a bigger and better fix, I guess.
I will say, Amory's been really good to me and I would say the last six years, working with this group and Pamela Large and Joe Jackson and Mr. Gould, everyone's treating me really well here and so I couldn't ask for a better experience. And I will continue to say hi to things about the school district of Amory moving forward here. Still have lawn wars with Dylan.
Nice.
My lawn looks better than Dylan's lawn.
I got those approved.
Look forward to my, uh, working with Mr. Gould on the officiating side of things, you know, continuing those relationships. And I joke that I hope I get to sell everybody's world home now, so.
I wasn't gonna give you the plug, I thought a lot of it to give you the plug, but I, okay, I guess we don't, self, self-plug, I guess that's all right. Well, we wish you, we wish you a blessing, I'm sure your pads will cross Amory again, so.
You guys are good.
Top-down show, Abby, it's coming up.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay, back on track. Sorry, guys, you're gonna have to sit there a little, little bit longer, but we'll get you.
We're good.
Okay, you should like, stop asking questions, we'll just move on. Okay, Building and Grounds update with Dr. Dirk.
Okay, Building and Grounds, we have our committee back in formation. Ryan Pease, our grounds director, Dirk Seigworth, our buildings supervisor, will join Steve Ostrone, Larry Whitecheck for Building and Grounds. The dates of our meetings over the course of the next year are noted there. Please note on the times, in July and August, we're able to meet from four to five. Starting in September, Ryan drives bus and he is not available until four-thirty, so we'll meet from five to six September through May. We meet for an hour and we go on campus where the high need is. We spent a lot of time on our athletics and our referendum work. And we'll set new priorities moving here into Building and Grounds work in the month of July.
You know, you could've told me that when I was an engineer, but then you can't.
I know.
Sorry.
You don't strike me as a paper kind of guy, I guess you're digital.
I didn't, I, so I've got all my candle, candle batteries, but I gotta shift them in a while.
That, that, in the button, top there. Button's gonna be top. Don't, don't hurt your fingers.
I'll get through it.
I believe in you. Early literacy remediation plan, you're just, you're on tonight.
I am, that's all right. So per Act Twenty, each school district in the state of Wisconsin has to have an early literacy remediation plan. So this, I am just bringing to you, I want you to be well informed about Act Twenty, how we're in compliance, but also, I guess, the, you know, how big Act Twenty has been for our Title One team or administrative team and myself. So we have to have an early literacy remediation plan. We, we were fortunate to work with CISA to have a, have a pretty good framework to be able to lay out. So what sits in front of you is our remediation plan, it is linked on our district website as it has to be. Within here, this is a, a guiding document for us, but also a great resource for parents as well. And so it talks about different sections, so you'll see the first section, I'll just walk you through each section and tell you a little bit about what's in there. So within section one is local systems and structures. And so we talked about our district miss, mission, but then also what is our processes here, what are we committing to do? This is tied to our PRPs, which is a personalized reading plan. This is tied to our PRPs, which is a personalized reading plan. You'll see there's a lot of different embedded links, so we have to embed the GLA standards, this is on page two. Also the Wemo, so Wisconsin Model Early Learning Standards, and then the WIDA as well. There are certain components within Act 20 of our curriculum, so that's our curriculum requirements, our instructional framework, sort of what we do during our day and how are we using our curriculum. So within that bottom of page two talks about what are the programs that we use in terms of core curriculum. And then we also within here do have tier two resources, which for those kids that are making those games, we talk about what are the programs that we use. Section two is our strategic assessment systems and communication plans. So it talks about our reading readiness screener, Ames Web Plus, which is Act 20 screener, as well as Fast Bridge and when our students are screened. So that's in section two. On the back, so on page four, we do have a beautiful flow chart, which hopefully is a good resource for anyone on the district website. So it just walks through what do we do when, so some of the H I report that we just talked about, there's schools that are falling below the 30th percentile. What are we going to do? So you can see on that left side, I'll walk you through per Act 20, what do we, what do we have to do? There are tight timelines, so you can see that's described down there as well. So we do have to screen our students within 45 days of the first day of school and 45 days before the last day of school. So we have, we have that window on both sides of the start and the end of the school year. That's laid out here as well and it also talks about our communication with parents. So not only do we give assessments, if a student doesn't do well on an assessment, we then have more diagnostic screeners to train a plan and we'll send that home to parents to let them know as well. So that's all within section two. When we look at section three, so this is the meat of what are we doing? So if a student is not making the gains that they should be or with their grade level peers, what are we going to do? We have a really robust menu of tools that we use and so those are described here. You'll see that there's different ones for different grade levels. So depending on what is the skill that a kid is missing, we'll talk about what intervention program are we going to use? So you can see those laid out on the bottom of page five and then that goes through all of page six, actually. So we have a huge commitment to knowing our kids and what do we need to do if they don't know it. We're, we're very good at that. We also have great data to support that as well. Talks about progress monitoring, so that's our commitment, that at least once a week, we are progress monitoring a student to make sure that they're getting what they need and that they're making forward progress. Page seven talks about our personalized reading plan. So again, that's for a student that's at risk. We will develop a personalized plan for them of what are we going to do? And then you can see in red, the promotional policy, which will be next up on the agenda with me. And then page eight is section four, so we do have to have a commitment to family community engagement. And so that is tied to our Title I, parents and family engagement policy, but then we also have different strategies of how we're going to aid the families at home. So having, you know, home and school connections, we have community involvement in literacy nights as well as mathematic nights, and then continuous feedback. That's on page eight. And then finally, on page nine, we talk about how are we using our data? And so making sure that we're doing the annual reports per Act 20, but then also making sure that we are reflecting on our instructional practices and our core resources as well. So again, this was, I just, I want you to be well informed of what Act 20 is required for us. And this was a huge piece of work that was completed and is on the website. Tracy, I greatly appreciated it. She's taken many emails from me. We do have a curriculum instruction page within our website now. So if you click on that, they'll have all of the Act 20 documentation as well as our Title I documentation.
Can you get audited?
There are, so I have been told that there are no Act 20 police, but, but this was, this was big.
Well, it is, it reminds me of what we do in business with, you know, ISO certification and talking about what we're going to do, but then there has to be the follow-up of actually proving to somebody that you're doing what you're talking about, you're going to do, right? So is it all internal audits or is there something from the outside?
Well, I can assure you nobody internally audits this more than this one does.
No, I'm, I'm very well.
But I say that as a compliment.
Yeah, yeah.
You must see someone that takes it seriously, right here.
This is us, I think what Act 20 has done, it's a benefit to us, is it's made us put it down and be sure we're doing what we've said all along we're doing. We're, this is, this not just verbiage, we're, this is what we're doing and we've been doing for a long time. We continue to add to the list. Jessica is just the one organizing and putting it on the spot by mandate. And we didn't have time laying around to do this. This was our mandate. So I think that's been a very big benefit. The other big benefit, I believe, is having to assess our kids and making sure they are above that 25th percentile. It's made us double and triple and quadruple not on the kids that we thought were having struggles. Now we really, 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 really don't at every level that they're assessed. So there's been benefit in that. The benefit hasn't been, you're not doing your job, but I want to get going. We were, but now we, we know, we articulate that we've laid it out. So I think there's been a benefit in that.
Yeah, I do have to say, as somebody who's sat on the board for a lot of years, had kids go through this, I mean, this isn't really anything new that's foreign to this district and obviously set up by some pretty good predecessors and you've followed suit and, and learned and went and expanded above and beyond. Obviously, it's just, just what I was going to say, that Sean said, just a matter of compiling it, things that we've already been doing. The, the bigger component that I see that's the new part is the fourth grade promotion piece of this Act 20. But this isn't, this isn't, maybe this is all things that, that you've done, but it's laid out very, very well. And I thank you for continuing dedication to doing what we've said and that's, that's where our mission, I love that you started that with our mission because it's always, it's been the mission. This has been our mission statement for the district for probably a good 20 years now, so, and I think it's been lived.
Any question, any more questions for Jess or comments?
What is morphology?
Morphine is the meaning of.
Morpheum.
Morphology. Phonetics and morphology.
Morphology is how a word is used, is that right, Abby? Like in intonation, morpheme is, is a higher.
Is that taking pieces of the word and making a complete?
Yeah, because we're used to the word.
I'm not sure, so that's why I'm asking.
It's the structure of words and, and how they derive from and how they can go into single meanings, single meanings.
Meaning, yeah, it's a smaller piece of a meaning that we're finding works.
Yep.
We're used to the big.
This is the best unit of class right here.
I like it. Great questions.
I hate people that answer their own questions.
No, and Charlie's exactly right when we talked about, you know, all the processes of learning, these are, some are, some are foundational, some are more of your higher level thinking and reading skills, but we've, we've been doing this and so now just to have a plan and a commitment to it that we can share out with people in a beautiful colored document on our website, to me, it's worth doing it. It really is because we're doing the good work and now we just have the evidence to say we are so much, we're good about it.
All good things. Anything else for Jess there?
I'm only, going back to the old auditing, I'm assuming then, obviously you've been doing it forever, that's what has been said, but by Acts 20, do you have to circle back around and audit yourself to say that we are doing all things?
You know, there's been some old personal checks, CISA has been great with working with us, checking in on us, what do you need, where are you at? Every district was in such a different spot. I told Sean right away in the fall, I just said, I'm, I'm super confident. Like I, we are, we are in such a good spot. A lot of districts right now are scrambling to find a curriculum. We have a great curriculum that we bought two years ago and now they're talking about, well, what are you doing for interventions? We have a menu of interventions that we've been committed to. So we were, we've just been in a really great spot, so there was no.
There were districts that didn't have screeners.
Yeah, that didn't do Fast Bridge and we had them, right? So we, we really are innovative. When we say that we're committed to growing students, this wasn't, this wasn't a response from us. This was not, let's just put it all together. So I would say CISA has been great in guiding us and I greatly appreciated that. There's been a lot of collaboration with other curriculum instruction directors. You know, we, we have been fortunate to submit to the DPI for some reimbursement on Fast Bridge, Fast Bridge screener. So we do have to have that piece because one of the approved diagnostic screeners is Fast Bridge, which we have, which we use. So we were able to claim some of that money back because we were using it. So there's little checks and balances like that to make sure that we're doing it, but.
To Jess's point too, one of the things that was great because of the speed that we're able to actually act on stuff that we had already been doing, such as utilizing top 10 tools, we were able to take advantage of the really very, very tail end of SIR to basically pay for that bulk upfront cost of sending some roughly 30 educators through that top 10 tools type situation, which has been great. And I know there's a lot of districts that weren't able to do that and they're having to foot the 20, 30, $50,000 bill however much it is just to be in compliance on that one area of Act 20.
Looks like we're well ahead of the curve. I have a body for what you're doing.
And that, you know, that was Larry, obviously, I don't think, none of you were here. When we voted through the HMH curriculum, that makes me feel really old and I've only been sitting in this chair for seven years. But when that curriculum was voted through, that was because of such a strong voice from all of our educators. Really, I mean, there was, there was a little bit of polarization there, but most, the bulk of our educators at that time.
They had two years on that.
Yeah, really wanted HMH.
It's been two years.
It was a, it was a huge undertaking to research both of those curriculums and which direction we were going.
Well, we started with twelve. They had 12 options and they pared it down all the way to the one they chose. That was a monster. This was invited by Cheryl, Jessica at that time. That was really big.
Yeah, so yeah, that was, I mean, all of the, all of the work goes to our educators who spent volumes of time going through those curriculums and trials and implementation there. That was, and then it was just kind of the final say that here was our recommendation, but that was a total team approach. So it was, it was fantastic. So we commend the whole team for that. It's been good. All right, John? So again, how do you get this dirty work of actually going through the audit anymore? Does the guy not come anymore?
Well.
Did we chase him away?
No, the, the issue has just been timing. So just to, to kind of just recap here, just a couple of changes for fiscal year '24, '25. And the first one has always been, we, we primarily have always selected for whatever reason to be audited the last week in August, which makes us one of the later districts to be audited. And so the, the audit process is a very long and convoluted process. You know, everybody always thinks, well, they're onsite for a day. I mean, you're talking months and months and months of work and bouncing documents back and forth with each other. And so we've, we've come a long way. And one of those things is this week, it's August 4th, so it's the first week in August. So we're one of the, the beginning districts, not the tail end districts. So that'll be huge. So the next year, the intention is to have Jonathan here in front of you guys kind of presenting. And I, I won't ever do nearly as good of a job as, as he does. They've been wonderful to work for, but work through. The issue this year is there was a lot going on in the co-mingling of Fund 38, Fund 39, Fund 49. There was reconciliation between those accounts. There was WISK investments. There was just as complicated as school finance can get for a fiscal year, that was '23, '24. Where you had some accounts that were intentionally going up, that were reporting going down, but you had some in the opposite direction. And really, it's just back to kind of how all this stuff is accounted for. Like I told Larry in, in April, at a little educator that we did last Friday, part of the issue is you live in liability accounts and equity accounts and liability and equity accounts are just rife with just kind of confusing transactions. So essentially what I've kind of prepared here today, Tracy's out for the rest of the week. The whole audit will be available on the website here within the next couple of weeks. We'll get that all uploaded. I just kind of cherry pick just a couple. Really, the focus on the audit is really on the two-fold. General fund is the vast majority of it and then the second thing of it is what's called the single audit. The single audit is as it relates to GAAP accounting. It's really making sure that we're in compliance with all federal regulations for federally awarded grants. So that comes down to making sure that what I'm claiming is what is actually recorded in our books and then making sure that those are actually allowable expenses. They also go through and make sure that we are in compliance with what's called supplement, not supplant, which is making sure that we are using federal dollars to supplement what we're already doing and not just paying for those. So the first three pages that I provided here, and I'm, I'm going to spare you guys the boring, boring, boring task of going line by line by line, are essentially, the first three pages are essentially the same information, just presented in three kind of different ways with three different snapshots. And they're basically the expense or at the top of the page is always revenues, in the middle of the page is always expenditures and at the bottom is balances. And so it's just kind of three different ways of looking wholesale at the information. Now, I will call out, and you know, this is always a hard one, but I will call out that there is a reduction in fund balance in '23, '24 that was not budgeted for. The reason for that is because when you look at it, you're going to see that the reduction that we went from two point, almost $2.4 million to $1.7 million, which is that number on the far, far right side of the page. So you're going to say, why is there a $1.1 million fund balance difference? And there's two reasons for that. The first one, because of the way that accounting works in school finance in Wisconsin, we do not have a mechanism in which to warehouse things on the books. So we made the decision to replace scoreboards, so we replaced those scoreboards and we are paying for those via sponsorships from community partners, like Lead Home Insurance. That process takes approximately five years to be made whole. The only place to warehouse that on the books is in fund balance. And so as a result of that, roughly $700,000 purchase, what you'll see is that fund balance will continue to go up just every year as we start to pay off that fund balance, if that makes sense. So that's a portion of it. The other portion of it was that we made a double contribution to Fund 73 via OPEB. It was just an accidental mistake, happy mistake, not a bad mistake, but a happy mistake. So we essentially overfunded a trust fund for the year. And so next year, you will not see that transaction happen. So it's about $417,000 that you won't see next year coming off of the books because it's already been forecasted and paid for. So, but I do also want to call out that at seven, at $1.7 million, an available unassigned fund balance, that still puts us well in compliance of our 5% rule that we have as a board policy here in the school district of Amory. In fact, it puts us closer to 10% and what you really want to see is about 10%. So I guess the, the big thing is just what, what questions do you guys have? You know, the, the audit report and the audit findings really do not go into super in-depth line by line detail as far as what makes up those expenses. Their job is obviously just to make sure that what I'm saying is an expense is an expense and what I'm saying is a revenue is a revenue. The last few pages of what I have presented here and what I have prepared for you here, the first one is just their statement of finding. And their statement of finding is that there was no material deficiencies or material issues that were found during the course of our audit. And the last two pages are always a fun one, those are our dings. And the dings are the same every single year, no matter what we do. The first one is limited segregation of duties and the second one is that we pay somebody to do our final entries for us, which is what you're supposed to do, but we all still get dinged on it. So there was no massive material adjustments that needed to be made. There was just a lot of kind of figuring out of how these funds all operate together. The good news is, is that this year should be a little bit more straightforward now that everything is squared away. But I'm welcome, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. If you need more time with this and you want to bring it up at another board meeting, I'm happy to do that as well. It's a, there's a lot of information in there, but it might not be the information you're necessarily looking for, if that makes sense.
So the mess that you talked about, the, the weeds you had to trudge through that's related to the referendum dollars and.
Yeah, and, and really kind of what, what screwed it up, what really kind of threw a monkey wrench in it is when we did the $5 million borrow. And then if you remember, the way that that operated is to take advantage of the interest rates is we did a note anticipation note and then we refinanced the note anticipation note to pay off the general obligation bonds. And so there's a very complex series of entries that need to get made through this DPI. Kind of, they, they kind of walk you through what that needs to be made. And essentially what was missed on there was a very small amount of interest that we actually accrued between April and. And essentially what was missed on there was a very small amount of interest that we actually accrued between April and June when we refinanced and when we closed on the sale of the whole general obligation bonds. And that was throwing everything off, but there was nothing that was telling us what that amount actually was. And then the second one is the, is how Fund Forty Nine, which is how we spend the Fund Thirty Nine monies. It's, they, they have to co-mingle, but they didn't necessarily have to co-mingle in a way. As it turns out, the process that was put in place prior to my tenure, when we did this, was a using P M A as our intermediary. So when George would request payment to a contractor, there was this process that we went through, but basically P M A and WIS were the ones who directly paid our contractors for that. That is not necessarily the cleanest way of doing it. Appropriate, absolutely. Legal, a hundred percent. The cleanest way of actually doing it is actually to use Fund Ten. So we're cutting the checks for those expenses and we're getting reimbursement from P M A for it. Because that would, that makes the actual entries that need to be made, an entry between Fund Ten and Fund Thirty Nine, and it completely leaves out Fund Forty Nine. Once you bring Fund Forty Nine into it, your expenses are all there, but there's no revenue. And when you have all expenses and no revenue, stuff starts getting a little kind of funky. And so what you'll see is not in this next fiscal, fiscal year after Fund Forty Nine will be at zero. It was at forty-three and a half million dollars two years ago and now it's at zero. And so the, it's just all of that co-mingle, it just makes it really kind of complicated. And the auditors just didn't really have a kind of any idea of how to do it. So they had to research it and then D P I and all their glory and wisdom kind of pointed them in the wrong direction at times and then they were butting heads for a little while. So it was an interesting winter, to say the least. That's for sure. So, yeah, does that answer your question?
Yeah. Yeah. For the, for the general public, when you talk about all those funds and all that stuff, it's so different than your personal finances. It's so different than business finances. It's a bear on of itself.
Correct. And, you know, and part of the, the problem with fund balance in general is that people don't understand really what the term fund balance means necessarily. Because you look at that and saying, well, so you, you must have misplaced one point one million dollars in cash, right? But that's not how fund balance works. It's not like a million, one point one million dollars got up at the left. It also doesn't mean that that's two point seven million dollars of actual cash money that's sitting on the books somewhere or sitting on anything. So it's really just kind of a number and, and the best way of putting it is it's the number that you're allowed to go in the hole the next year and still be technically in that zero balance or net zero budget. And I, that's not the goal. That's never the goal. But at the same point, you want to keep it as healthy as possible. But that's always a huge one. So.
Yeah, I think Jonathan always says that about fifteen percent is your goal in that fund balance.
Correct.
And generally, the district runs between six and seven percent. So ten percent is actually a step up?
Yeah. And, and, you know, the other, the other, the other questionable variable factors is like Fund Twenty Seven or Special Education has to be made whole at the end of the year. So you can use what you, when we go through the budgetary process, we know roughly what we're gonna get in federal help. We know roughly what we're gonna get in state categorical aid, but that number depends on so many different things that you're, you can budget for one point five million dollars as your Fund Twenty Seven transfer. But at the end of the year, we had a kiddo pop up who's extremely high needs, who doesn't fit the window, where maybe we had to buy a van and we weren't able to actually get that in in time. And so that one point six million dollars becomes two point one and Fund Ten has to make it whole. And so what happens is if it's not budgeted or if it goes over your expense, which is what it technically is, now you're gonna see an impact to your fund balance. So, you know, you try to safeguard it as much as you humanly possibly can, but at the same time, you know, it is a bit of a moving target. There's many school districts that have fund balances, which is not even close to where we are. I just make sure I feel that better.
Yeah, we're not there.
We're not there.
We're not there.
We're not there. But I'd be happy to answer any questions now, later, anytime. Those book, big books are fun.
Yeah, I love these things. I, I crack them open every June when we get these and just sit there and read heavy at night and go to sleep.
Yeah.
Great insomnia. I mean, if your numbers nerd, I guess, they're fantastic. I do, I do like the consomme. All right. Any questions for John on the audit? Okay. I think that's enough. Thanks, John. I think you summarized that. And now, because you did the audit, you can now talk about the district's budget too.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to prepare a couple of things and, and kind of start a conversation. And really, the, the conversation is a little bit less in regards to what Amory's budget is and more in line with what's happening with the state, what we're hearing, what we're seeing. So I do, I do want to quickly just remind everybody of a couple of things that we've all probably talked about a little bit over the course of the last year or two years. The first one is we're in a biennial process, correct? Biennial budget process. In the last biennial budget, there was a lot asked for, but at the end of the day, there was only really two things that were achieved off of the governor's list of wants. The first one was a per pupil increase to our revenue limit authority of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the second one was an increase in the minimum, revenue limit ceiling minimum of from nothing to essentially ten thousand dollars. In this biennial process, the D P I and the governor's office were asking for a couple of things in hoping to take advantage of the seven billion dollar reported budget surplus. The first one would be increasing our special educational categorical reimbursement rate from thirty percent, roughly thirty percent, to sixty percent or higher. Reason for that is most school districts, about a third of our special education budget comes straight from the federal government. And that leaves Fund Ten to pick up the tab for the other two thirds. The hope was having a state with increased needs for our students, especially our I D and E B D kids, and the increasing expenses that are on districts to pick up a little bit of that gap of that. What that would have meant to the school district of Amory is essentially about a million, million and two on the high side back into our general operating fund if they would have increased that up to sixty percent. That was kind of the first one. And arguably, that was probably the biggest budgetary impact that we could have seen. The second one would be increasing their per pupil in an additional three hundred and thirty-four dollars in fiscal year twenty six and three hundred and forty-five dollars in fiscal year twenty seven, which, and then additionally, raising the low revenue ceiling to twelve thousand four hundred dollars by fiscal year twenty seven. How that impacts us is, you know, really, you look at that and you're like, well, nine bucks in twenty six and ultimately twenty bucks in twenty seven. How does that really impact? Well, twenty times thirteen hundred roughly students is not a small amount of money. The bigger one that would have impacted us in that ask would have been actually the low revenue ceiling, because currently we sit at about eleven thousand eight hundred and forty-ish. And so we would have automatically been bumped up to twelve thousand four hundred dollars just by that going through. And then the, the, the other one that really would have affected us would have been restoring inflation index revenue limits. And as I, like I said, this is one that always kind of blows people mind, but we divorced from indexed by inflation index as a state in two thousand nine. And we haven't returned since. So as of twenty four, twenty five, if we just look at inflationary rates and what our increases have been, we're three thousand three hundred and eighty dollars per pupil behind where we should be if we were indexed by inflationary spending. So when we start talking about these big picture things, that's really, I think, the one that's the most shocking to people is that if we would have just stayed married to inflation, as most states are, we would be three hundred and thirty-eight, hundred dollars more per pupil better off than, than what we are right now. So unfortunately, we did hear, last week, Sean and I did hear, that the only thing the state is going to be doing after the meeting of the joint finance committee is an increase from roughly thirty percent to thirty-five percent for special education. And that's it.
And the three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And the three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Money that comes from the state budget, the three hundred and twenty-five dollars per pupil and Chris will, straight from property tax, so that's being put on the taxpayer. Now, that hasn't gone to vote yet. That's a joint finance committee omnibus bill that's specific to education. The budget as a whole has stalled and it's the product of a breakdown in communications between the, in essence, the Senate Republicans and the governor's office in dissension within the Senate Republicans in regards to what the priorities for budget will be. So there isn't a budget at this point in time for any of the departments, not just education, any of them. July first is the start of the next fiscal year. That's next Tuesday. So if there's nothing by next Tuesday, the state's simply gonna operate on the twenty-three, twenty-five framework, continue to proceed forward. But at this point in time, the increase from thirty to thirty-five is impotence. And there isn't any of that seven billion dollar budget surplus in the state of Wisconsin that's being devoted to education. That again is a increase in property taxes of three hundred and twenty-five dollars per pupil for every pupil in the state of Wisconsin that property taxpayers are going to be paying. And I think that's where the stall has occurred, is people are balking at that. That would be my estimation, but I don't know that for certain.
And, and just to, to be fair, I, I guess I, I said that's the only thing, the, that's the only thing that directly impacts us here in this school district of Amory. The only other one that could potentially is a increase in high-cost special education claims from fifty to ninety percent. The problem with that is that the threshold for a high cost is extremely high. So Abby and I sat down and we sat down and did a whole lot of mathing for two pupils that we have that are technically high needs. And it's still, it, it, it doesn't even come close to scratching the surface of what, what these kiddos need to actually cost us. And we are not in the business of denying them those needs, that's for sure. So.
To be honest, very short, we're in a whole way pattern. We're waiting for a budget. We don't have a budget. We don't know our numbers and nor does anybody else. So we're not unlike anybody else in any work that depends on financing the state of Wisconsin. So when they have a budget, then we'll know where we sit. And we'll be back here and we'll tell you what that number is. Is it three twenty-five? Is there something different? But right now, we just don't know.
So what I've, what I've gone ahead and just prepared just for you guys, it's in your board packets, is just roughly as it stands today, where's John at? As far as the budgetary process is concerned, what does that look like? And the first page you'll see in the top right corner is the red cap. You know, that's where ultimately when I plug in the numbers, you can kind of see where it's at. And, you know, as you're kind of parcelling your way through this, again, the reason we don't set our budget in June every year is because we don't get our actual information until August at the very earliest to actually be able to make these types of decisions. We don't know right now what the equalized property value increases is gonna be given. We don't know right now what our A I D calculation is gonna be. So that process is going on right now. And I think their goal is always a July first equalization A I D estimate release. I just got a call today. I was kind of working through a couple of different things with D P I, so I know that they're working on it. So that, that's the first one. And you can kind of just look and see kind of more or less revenue wise, what that looks like for us if we just kind of roll forward last year into this year, which is essentially what it would be in Fund Ten, as far as pupils are concerned and everything like that. And what you see is really just a fairly small reduction in what our base allowable revenue would be from sixteen point two six four million to sixteen point two six three million. So we're talking about just a matter of a couple hundred dollars difference there. The hard part here is the fact that our costs are continuing to increase, right? That's the thing that's hard to lose sight of, to not, to make sure that we're not losing sight of is, yeah, our budget isn't getting slashed. We're not losing a ton of money. But our costs are increased. I mean, they just are with inflation and everything. Everything is getting more expensive. Hopefully, there is, is some revenues for that in this next year. We don't know. That remains to be seen. So that's kind of that first page, the front and the back of that page. It's, it's kind of a hard one to print. If I was to actually print this in a way you could do it, it would make sense of it. It would probably take, you know, four pages of eleven by seventeen paper to actually do that. So if you have any questions with that one, then the other one is just simply the expenses and revenues, or I'm sorry, just expenditures as it relates to kind of what I'm thinking for this year. And what I'm thinking for this year is, again, essentially, it is just a natural progression like Sean has been talking about as far as salaries are concerned. If you look through that first sad, first part of that first page in the one hundreds there, that's all of our salaries. And you'll notice, you might be kind of poke your ears up a little bit to the fact that there was a negative two point two eight when we're, when we're suggesting before. That's simply because we did save about a half a million dollars.
Yeah, there were six budgetary cuts via staff, but they got the non-renewal or retirement with a new person hired at last wage. Cause a retiree goes out at the top and a new person may come in at the bottom in wage scale. And all of those six together, you're looking at about a five hundred thousand dollar difference in budget in the positive, if you will.
And the only, in order, and, you know, the big number that, you know, everybody wants to know is on that very last page where it says surplus or deficit. And of course, it does say negative fifty thousand dollars there. And, and I, I, just as a matter of perspective, I just want to make sure that people understand, you know, that's twenty-two million dollars in a fifty thousand dollar budget surplus. So you're talking about a hundred something percent of your total budget. And that number can go in either way, right? So the biggest cut that I had to make in order to get to that number was in capital expenses and ultimately in, in buildings and grounds. And we're not talking about massive slashing of, of anything but a hundred thousand dollars here, a hundred thousand dollars there. So again, the, the big thing that this is not gonna allow us to do is give anything more than natural progression. And that's really what.
Unless the state comes forward with a different proposal than the three twenty-five, then we would be able to do more. And that is our hope. But again, we don't know.
We, we've talked about those increases, you know, like a three twenty-five.
Yeah.
Is that three twenty-five increase over what it was last year or is it off of a, off of a?
So, yeah, so it's off of our base low revenue ceiling. So whatever our base low revenue ceiling was when you did the three twenty-five, it's three twenty-five plus whatever that number is.
And that number's based off of the nineteen ninety?
No, that number's based off of twenty ten. That was in act ten. So that's when they locked in where it was. And, you know, I, I can't say it enough, thank, thank the Lord that we were where we were when that happened. Because there was a lot of districts in rural Wisconsin that were well below where we were. I think we were right around eleven thousand dollars when that occurred. There was tons of districts that were seventy-five hundred, eight thousand dollars. And so in the last biennial budget, they got a huge leap forward because we pushed that to ten thousand dollars. But for us, that didn't have really any seismic impact for us. So, you know, again, my goal, my hope was always that maybe they'd look at this and say, okay, even half of what is being asked for. Any number of those things would have had a great impact on our students and our staff and, and the school district in general. Doing really none of those things is, you know, not really the end of the world for us, but it certainly is for Amory Districts. Certainly.
Is there anything that the public can do to talk to their legislature?
Contact them and advocate for greater funding for public education if they believe in what we do. Cause as it stands right now, that's an expense that's being put on them as taxpayer. When you've got a seven billion dollar surplus in Madison, if you believe in public education, now is the time to let your elected officials know you need to make an investment in these schools. And that in combination with the battery of legislation that's being introduced about your inability to go to referendum. If you are not going to fully fund schools and you're gonna tell them you cannot go to referendum, how can schools possibly stay afloat? We're in a position not to have to go to referendum, very likely for quite a long time, ten, fifteen years. There are many of our neighbors that are going to referendum and this might be their last chance to do so. So if you believe in public education, I would let your elected officials know, this is not sufficient. You're asking more of me when you've got seven billion dollars there. That's not okay. And I know they won't see it quite that simply, but really, it is quite that simple.
I, I think the thing that, you know, bringing it back to a home level, cause it's easy to get wrapped up in Madison politics and, and stuff like that. You know, the thing that I always think of a lot, and I, and I wish we, kind of everybody had a better handle on is, you know, we've got plus or minus thirteen hundred students, but we also have plus or minus three hundred payroll staff. So there's sixteen hundred human beings that are being impacted. So there's 1,600 human beings that are being impacted by this place, 184 student contact days a year. Then you start talking about each one of those kids likely has a mother and a father, they have grandparents, they have this. When you're talking about a community the size of Amory, it would not, I don't feel that it would be hyperbole to say that at least 60% of this population is touched by the school district of Amory, one way or the other, most of the days of the year. And so if you want to see us continue to grow and thrive, those tough conversations need to happen with state legislatures to say, we want our kids to be able to go and, and learn how they learn and, and be supported by great teachers and great staff and, and in a positive environment. Unfortunately, we've tried, we did, we tried at the state level. The WASD, WASDA, ASA, all of the four-letter and five-letter groups tried during the last joint committee on finance. And instead of increasing the amount of meetings they had, and last I checked, they decreased. So we went from many meetings to a lot less, and they had five this year.
It was 14 down to five.
14 down to five. And it was because of an overwhelming amount of people that were up there testifying in front of them. I, I personally just don't think that's right. I think that that is skirting your, your responsibilities as the newly-elected, as newly-elected representative. But at the end of the day, it's, so where is the $7 billion going to go? And I think that's where really people need to start getting a little bit more vocally angry as far as education. We should, we should be getting our portion. The kids need it, the teachers need it, the world needs it frankly. So, anyways.
Is there any lobbying groups besides the-
Yeah, I mean, I, there, there's, there's absolutely some fantastic organizations out there, and, and we're all members of one or multiple-
ASA does that.
ASA does that.
Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators do that. I receive Pratt texts all the time from them, up to and including through that, where the information that I share came from about, they just canceled their vote because they didn't have consensus, and then I can't vote without a known consensus. So that information literally came in at 2:30 this afternoon. So their lobbyists, their, the eyes are upon them. It would seem illogical to me to ask taxpayers to pay $325 per pupil, and this is everywhere, not just in Amory, and then use $7 billion as fill-in for property taxpayers. Why would you make them pay now and then give them more later? I don't, I don't know how that, that seems backwards to me, but I don't know their rhyme nor their reason in regards to what they're doing. So we're going to have to wait and see. But yes, there are advocacy groups right now. They simply need to make a decision whether they are going to invest or not going to invest in public education.
And I would say that the, the last thing, and then I'll, I'll hop off my soapbox if that's what I'm standing on right now. The fact that there is not been a sizable change for how school is funded in the state of Wisconsin since 1993 should be shocking to everybody, because that's, that's a very long time without any major considerations, no matter what key performance indicator you're looking at, whether it's how we teach our kids, the cost of teaching our kids, it's completely and totally different, 32 years on. So I think it is 100% appropriate to tell your state legislator, your local elected officials at, down in Madison, maybe 32 years is too long to go without re-looking at a single piece of legislation.
Thoughts change from 32 years?
Thoughts should change from 32 years.
I know that there's a lobbying group, when we went onto that Madison-
Yeah, yeah.
Where they talk about the school, the school finances, and trying to get something that's uniform across the districts, because the districts, you're right, they're, they're all over the board on what, what their base rate is. And I don't know if we're a member of that group, or if we're not, should we consider being that?
We probably are.
We are, I'm not sure who you're referring to, but all of us-
I get emails from, I could, I could send something to you, but I-
Absolutely.
They're likely referring to the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, or ASA.
Or ASA, yeah.
Those are the two groups that are lobbying hardest. And then there's the SAA, which is certainly an advocacy group, just the Superintendent's Alliance, or whatever it's called.
Yeah.
There's all sorts of groups that are doing just that work. But I don't know that they're being heard. I think they know the facts, but it's politics, and when you have politics at play, the facts sometimes get crowded out. Right now, your state senate is an 1815, 18 Republicans and 15 Democrats. The trick there is, your consensus is tougher to build when you have an 1815. You lose one, you're at 17, 16. You lose two, you flip. And right now, there are two Senate Republicans that have outwardly stated, I will not vote for this omnibus bill in its present form. And that's when the vote got canceled, when those two came forward. So consensus is harder to build when it's political. So hopefully, we'll be able to broker out their differences and support public education, because it needs to happen.
Yeah, and regardless, I think of politics, I think what we, obviously, like John said, you can get wrapped up in Madison politics or federal politics, and all we really have control of here is, is the school district of Amory, is, is that what is our goal in public education here? And I think it's been long said, and I don't care if you stand on one side of the aisle or in the middle or on the other side, is that public education's responsibility, and I think that what we all want as community members is to see your community thrive, and what is success for the kids that come out of this district is to be productive members of your community and society, whether that's you staying in Amory or going somewhere else. And unfortunately, just the cost of giving kids to that end has just gone up exponentially. And I know the easy thing to say is, we all operate within a budget, and so the school district has to do well. It's just that we don't have the choices that you do with your own personal life of how to cut. We are subject to our insurance premiums going up, we're subject to our electric bill going up, just like everybody else.
You don't get to choose our clientele-
We don't get to choose the kids that come.
Having spent the last six months at the elementary, there are students that were not there in September, that all of a sudden showed up, and they were students with high need, which we care, which is high cost. We don't, we don't even know where our clientele's going to be from day to day.
And, and I, and, you know, and it's easy to say, like, well, if you, I, I don't want that to get lost, that we keep talking about high needs kids here, because that's what we do. And you're talking to a parent, I, I'm talking as a parent of somebody who was high needs, who needed extra help, and now is a very member, a productive member of society, and has his self-sustaining job, and can live on his own, and that was only done through public education, even though it costs us more. We embrace those kids regardless of the cost, and know that, that we've, we've totally accepted that challenge here. And I, I don't want anybody to think like, oh, gosh, you know, we, kids that, that have higher needs, they cost the most, and so we are not going to shuttle those kids off. It's just, it's just the hand that we're dealt, and it's, it's happening everywhere. It's not just happening here, it's happening everywhere. Kids are just changing. And I'm sure there's a, a mountain of factors why that is. Society's changing.
And one of the, one of, there was a, somebody recently said, you know, that, that we hear education is broken all the time. Well, when you haven't really taken a look at how you funded it in 32 years, just look at your car. Does a 32-year-old car need to be fixed and maintained over the course of time? Absolutely. So yeah, it's, it's broken. The problem is, the, with the state, and I do understand the argument, if the state is saying that we're in decline as far as enrollment is concerned, then why are you guys asking for more money? And it comes down to exactly what you're saying. You're not taking into account the needs of our students have never been higher. And so that's, that's just something that, that we have to deal with.
And just the cost of doing business is, is higher. And if you want to retain those good quality educators, yes, we have to pay them, but they're still probably grossly underpaid for what they should be for what, I mean, because you're going to lose those people who are very smart, very bright. I feel very fortunate that we have so many people that are here that are bright and wonderful and driven, that haven't left and went to a private sector job that could be making $70,000 more out of the gate. So, obviously, that's, that's part of it. There's, there's lots to decide here, and obviously, that's a good snapshot of the budget and things that people can do.
And again, still a work in progress, and it's, it's not a, it's a lateral decision made by me, or just me and Sean, this is definitely a working document, and it will be. I do, if, I, I did, I missed one part of our audit report that I wanted to just plug, if you're okay with me going back in time at all. And that was just simply, we were audited a second time this year, it was our membership audit. So we were randomly selected out of the, however many school districts to get our membership audit. And I didn't prepare anything for this one, but our membership audit went great. We were actually plus two kids, and it wasn't actually our mistake, it was an actual, it was an OE out calculation mistake that was on another district's part. So our, our, we had a crystal-clean and outstanding membership audit, saying that we are exactly where we've said we were, we are every year on our PI 1505. So that was another good one, so.
Good job, Karen. An OE meaning open.
Open, open, sorry. Yeah, so it's how you calculate going ins and outs, and if you, if you say somebody came in, but nobody said that person went out, then that's a ding, and none of that happened, so we were good.
In addition to, I was going to tag-team this, this district budget item with you, John, a little bit here, and I wanted to tap a little bit with the board here, in a completely transparent and open forum, that prior to Larry and April, you guys coming onto the board, there was a request made by a community member, asking for what we call vouchers to be published online. Larry, you just went through that tonight. I want to commend John for putting on apparently a two-and-a-half-hour clinic for Larry and April on, on a Friday. Well, I'm not sure how accurate that it was, I'm just kidding. For, on school finance, and I don't know, April, did you, so you guys all have your sample?
Yep.
Okay. Sheets in your packets there. Did you, John, did you guys cover these sample sheets when you went through, like, kind of, okay. So maybe for Larry, you got a, got a crash course in that tonight, when you went through the vouchers with Steve and April, if you're looking at that tonight. So the vouchers, what we talk about, we talk about that every meeting at the beginning, are reams of paper, stacks of paper, that the board members, we, we wrote down those every month, so that it's always somebody different looking at those vouchers and approving what those bills are that are to be paid. So we don't, the vouchers are the actual expense ask, right? So that's, it's just something different. What you're looking at is what I would call, like, a cover sheet of each of those folders that we get. So we can see that there's, it's a ledger, is what I would call this. So we can see that there's a check number here, and this is what we get in a synopsis that, like, would be looking at your bank statement or your own personal checking account of, of coming, of expenses going out. So if I wanted, I'm looking down on these expenses, and I go, oh, I don't understand what, why was this, I'm just going to say, this check number 140093 written to Mississippi Welder Supply for $44.86? I can go to that 140093 check in, in the supplemental pieces of paper, and I can see who has requested that reimbursement, or where that bill needs to be paid to and for what. So I'm assuming this is probably for our tech ed class, for welding supply, for our welding class, that's all signed off on administrators, that would probably be at the high school level. And so Josh would have signed off on that, and we can look at that, we can see the bill that goes with it. The finance office is meticulous in getting those things ready for us to look at every month. Obviously, Larry, you've seen those tonight. What this community member asked is, there are other school districts that do this, and they publish this kind of ledger online every month for the community to see. And so that, we don't currently do that here in this district, and it's been asked, if that was something that we were interested in. The community member has had a little bit of exchange back and forth with a couple of board members. I promised that we would talk about this on the agenda as two new board members were coming into, I wanted to get you guys' opinions to weigh in and what you felt, if that was something that we can do. I wanted to include John in this conversation of how we are set up to currently do that. I, I don't have a strong, I just want to know what everybody's opinions are, I'd like people to weigh in on this, if that's something that we're interested in as a board to move forward with, that we could design a, not a policy, but a procedure, how that would happen, along with Sean and John to do that. If that's something that we say it's good the way it is, and, and we're elected to do this job, that it kind of just, it kind of ends here at this point. And so I just want to see what the board's feeling is moving forward with this, and what kind of concerns there are. I have, I don't have a strong opinion either way, but I do have obviously concerns. So I want to open it up for discussion of, do we, what do you guys think, if that's something that we want to move forward with, and pursue or not?
And if, if-
Go ahead.
I would just add a couple of things. There are districts that do, every, of the 421 school districts in, in the state of Wisconsin, I bet there's not two that are, that are even close to how they do their vouchers. There are some districts, I know Durand, Arkansas, as recently as two years ago, physically had three board members coming in twice a week, every week, to sign each individual check prior to remitting it. There's some districts that only do check runs once a month, which is directly after a board member, so that you can look at everything beforehand. Now, the, the, there, there's a lot of things that you can say that would be a pro and con to doing that. The biggest one is, we issue some 3,000-plus just paper checks every single year. And so if you just kind of do the math on that, you're talking about meeting a board member or multiple board members for hours every single week or every single month in order to do that. The other part with doing that is, if you, if you're only doing it once a month, you could potentially be making late payments chronically, because you're waiting for a board member to come and do it. So it, it's just, I, I think the process that we have here is a great process, I really do. And I mentioned it to both Larry and April a couple weeks ago. You know, the, the other part is, although we only have one board member that's signing off of the voucher reports, they are open and accessible to board members at any time. You are welcome to come and inspect it. And if you have questions, I am always available to, to answer those questions. But to Shar's point, Stacy, who's responsible for 90% of getting that stuff all, all set up, is very meticulous with how she does it. She doesn't miss much, and she's our first level of kind of catch. And she does, she absolutely catches expenses quite frequently that kind of raise an eyebrow, or why are we doing this? She's also the one that's chasing down and making sure every single Minar's rebate, we do not miss a receipt, even though it might be for $17, it doesn't matter, we're, we're capitalizing on that. So the, the voucher detailed report that I have in your guys' board books here, I, I think this is a really happy medium, I really do. This is a very quick report to run. The biggest thing is, when it comes to paper checks, paper checks are not actually cleared through the bank, being our system, until the last day of the month. And I don't actually get that information from the bank until I get a monthly statement a day or two later. And it could be a few days after that that I actually get to it. So if what you're looking for is, is on February 28th, that you can see every expense that would occur in the month of February, it's just not going to happen. It won't happen until well into, into March. So this is just kind of an example of what that would look like. What the actual dates would look like would be more what you saw today. So you would see it in form of a batch or a board run, which would be what we're doing every single Thursday when we're remitting those. This is just kind of the general layout of how you can see it.
And so I guess that, so, and what we're talking about is, if we were to put this information out to the public on our website that's readily accessible to the general public, this is what that would look like. It wouldn't include all of the supporting documentation-
Correct.
-that we see as a board member. And so obviously, you can see on here, like, check number 140060 is written to a private person. And now, if I want, now, obviously, that's going to, as a board member, that would trigger me to go, okay, why are we writing a check to a private person? So I can go specifically to that check number and go, oh, okay, that's probably, that was a lunch account reimbursement, because they graduated, and that was, they had this balance in their lunch account. The general public would never get to see that. They would only get to see that, oh, we're writing this out to so-and-so, where is that money going? And that happens with athletics, when we're doing, uh, roughing, right? So my neighbor roughs for the school district, and so he's written out checks. Now, of course, this is taxpayers' money, and everybody should have access, in my opinion, to see where their tax dollars are going. I have concerns when we're readily spoon-feeding it out there to people, and somebody's like, oh, I want to see what Shar's neighbor, I'm not going to say his name, but Shar's neighbor makes, and it's like, oh, well, you just, you know, you took $6,000 of my tax money to go rough, you know, for the school district this year, you're buying coffee. six thousand dollars of my tax money to go rough, you know, for the school district this year, you're buying coffee. Or what, what kind of, um, you know, relationships does that look like in a very small community? Like, is there impacts in a small community on, and relationships? Does it create, um, undercutting of businesses, but then overcharging for something else when we can see what other businesses are charging? Not that I'm arguing that competition is a bad thing, um, but does that then, um, does that then include those businesses when, when taxpayers say, well, you got X number of dollars from the school district this year and so, I'm not gonna give them any more business? And then would they not bid jobs for the school district because they're potentially losing local business from taxpayers? Um, and then would they have to charge the school district more to make up for that business?
Shar, here's my opinion on this.
And this is exactly what we're looking for.
As a new board member, I'm impressed with the amount of transparency that I've seen so far. I mean, I've seen nothing but the utmost transparency on, on everything that goes on here within the district. I think if you were to, to publish this, I think it would create a lot of unnecessary speculation and, and without having the supporting documents, and I don't know how you could begin to.
You couldn't.
To provide all the supporting documents to the summary. I, I think it would just be speculative, unnecessary, and create a lot of angst. And, and I, I, I agree with, um, John, that I think we have hit a happy medium here. I'm very comfortable with the checks and balances in the system, the way it works now, so. I'm relatively new, but that's my outside perspective.
Well, and I, I mean, that was kind of the idea of, we were going to have two new board members and I thought that this discussion would be better served with two new perspectives coming in to say, um, what this should look like moving forward. So that's kinda why I tabled this, um, but I promised to have this conversation and I will hold to that promise, so that's what we're having.
You haven't done vouchers yet, right?
I have not done vouchers yet.
So you'll, you'll get an eye opening.
I will, um, I sat through a handful of hours of just enlightening information with John and I appreciate his time two Fridays ago, but I would agree with, with Larry's sentiments. Um, I think everything is very transparent that I've seen up to this point. And I do agree that posting something like this without explanation for each line, which wouldn't even be possible online, would just create a firestorm. I mean, I think that people would definitely speculate on probably every single check that's written.
Well, 'cause we, we experienced that tonight. So Larry and I, when we did vouchers, there was a question, well, why are we doing this? Well, why are we doing that? And so we asked John, and there's a, there's an absolute reason why we're doing it, right? And things like paying another school district, right? Why are we transporting kids from a different city? Well, there's reasons for it.
Yeah.
Right? And there's reasons that we can't, you can't get into the details with the general public, but it's all either mandated by law or just part of the process of whatever, you know, drove that check to be cut.
Yeah, a, a great example, Larry asked, they asked tonight, why are we buying refrigerant from the, from the hospital? Well, it's because Georgia's saving you guys money, that's, that's the reality is they have an excess surplus. They're selling it to us and it's exactly what we need. I, I, the, the concern that I've always had is that, you know, if everybody understood fund accounting, if everybody understood wofer, if everybody understood wofer and could speak it well, and then also understood that there is differences between the funds and how they co-mingle, I think it's a different set of circumstances because, uh, again, if you can't identify the difference between a ten, Fund Ten and a Fund Twenty-One, you, you're getting all the, it's very easy to draw some very short sighted conclusions that are completely not true to your base of fact. And so I, 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 I've always been impressed by our system here, frankly, I really have. I think it's a, a very good, happy medium as far as when we can issue payments and what our guidelines are and what our board policies are as far as spending thresholds are concerned. Um, you know, you, that was that five thousand dollar plus mark, I think is a really good indicator. So I, you know, again, I, I'm at your guys' pleasure and I'm happy to do whatever, but I just think there is, you, you have to have context and I think it's also impossible to spoon feed that context to every single person. It just is. I'm happy to educate people anytime as much as I can.
So the, the other thing is, that's what we are elected to do. We are elected to oversee this stuff on behalf of the public, right? And, um, I guess if, if it were to be made available online, you can't limit it to who sees it. The world sees it, when, when it only affects, or should only affect, your local population, right? So if something like this were to be made available, which I think would probably be okay, I wouldn't want it online. It would have to be where somebody could come into the office, review it. That way, if there's questions, the people are there to ask them.
Well, and that is the, the big thing that we, that we have as the board, that we have John at our disposal. And we set these appointments up when we come in and generally it's done before board meetings, but you could do it if John's not going to be here and it doesn't work to come in prior to a board meeting at four thirty or whatever, four o'clock that is. Uh, we can set that up ahead of time and say, you know, John, when, when are you gonna be here so that we can ask John those questions? You're readily available. Um, I fear that putting something like this out to the public that would cause speculation, but then I go public beyond, not just the speculation, but then I applaud those people to be like, well, I have lots of questions. I'm gonna pick up the phone and call John or email. I fear that John would do nothing more than for a while, answer questions regarding what's, why, why was this check issued to so-and-so? And, and that is a fear that we don't pay John enough to do that, because John's job is difficult.
And there's just, you know, there, there's some of the expenses that are in here that can absolutely be, can be presented to the general public in generality, such as what our health insurance premium is or our four oh three B total contributions to Horace Mannar. Um, but no matter what happens, I, you will not get any more detail because it's private protected information, um, uh, based on our, our payroll information. So it's, no matter what, there's going to be line items on here where just legally, we cannot provide you with the supporting documentation. And so I, 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 I would agree with Steve. I mean, that's what we're here for, I mean, we're here to answer questions and, and do our jobs and, and, you know, answer, you know, if, if Becky Schmink gets a check tomorrow for ten grand, you know, and why didn't she get a check for ten grand? And again, if you didn't know that maybe Becky is the, the president of the girls volleyball boosters club and she's getting payment for whatever the enrollment was so that she could put it into her booster account, yeah, it's very easy to draw that conclusion.
It does hap- yeah, and it does happen.
Sure does.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, do we need a motion?
No, I, this was strictly for information, I just wanted to discuss this with the board in a very open forum.
No, I'm, I'm not in favor of ever publishing that.
This is, um, uh, this is, obviously we're elected officials and we can't have these conversations in private to say like, I want, you know, this is to be on the agenda. There's certainly no reason to draft, uh, policy or procedure to just throw it out the door. That takes a lot of time and energy, so I just want, it's a lot easier to have these conversations here now as, as elected officials together. That's what our meetings are for, um, and say that this was something that I had promised, um, uh, an individual of the community, a taxpayer, and I'm, I'm following through on that promise and that's, that's what this was. And then if, you know, if the, if we wanted to move forward, then we would work and, and move forward with that. It doesn't seem like that's the consensus to bring forward to another agenda, so I will just let this kinda drop, that this is kind of the board's position on this right now, that we leave this as is. And if people have, uh, questions in the greater community, John's always open. I, I know that people have come in and viewed certain documents that they can, um, this, and it's not, that's nothing new. That's been happening for decades. Yes, so, community members have come in, you've compiled information for them. Your predecessors have compiled information for them to come in and look at that, so. Um, I think we're all in agreement that we leave it as is, that this is what our job is, financial oversight and that, that hopefully the community has put their trust in us, that we are overseeing the finances. But I, I do have to add to our finance department, you guys do a great job.
Stacy doesn't miss much.
No, you guys are, you guys are hawking. It might be a different story if Stacy ever leaves us. All right, moving, I promise, I promise I'm getting to you. Okay, first reading of policy three forty-three point three, early college credit program and start college now.
Okay, well, you gonna do it?
I was just gonna say.
Go ahead, I'll let you do it, you live this every year.
Dr. Dean did most of the work on this, but this, basically this is just what we have to do to follow the law, which is what we've done for years. It's that simple.
It's a policy of the chart. If you look at the, go to the next, the chart that we have brought up many times, the policy's that. But we still have a policy, so now we have a policy that is the chart.
One hundred percent follows what the law says.
So really not a debate, I mean, this is, this is the first reading.
It's not, it's not a debate.
Yeah.
It's just a policy that reflects the chart used for a decade.
Well, if I, if I ever know that there's something that we gotta get through quick, Josh, my end. Few words, that's it. Okay, so that's the first reading, obviously this will be brought back next month, we'll see the second reading for approval from the board, it's law, so. That's just the way it is. You guys are up, I, I told you, I was getting to you. Liability insurance renewal.
They have a short commute, so I'm good.
I know, I know, I, I'm sure they just come here and say.
Oh, it's always good. For the one or maybe two of you who don't know who I am, I am Jim Leo, lead home insurance here in Amory. Son Ben is here for my backup in case you stump me.
Apparently way back, 'cause he's like way back there, it's like, ah, I ain't telling these people nothing.
Um, we've enjoyed a very longstanding relationship with the school district of Amory, so we thank you for that. Sean and John asked if I would be willing to come to the board meeting tonight to discuss the insurance and I said, this year, absolutely. Last year I was here in May and we had a very long conversation. We had a difficult message to deliver. The board was very understanding with the state of the insurance marketplace. I'm standing before you now that the insurance marketplace hasn't moved a whole lot. It's still very hard, it's still very difficult. I think John was anxious to get some indication from me for his budget, to know what we're looking at and it took a little while, but besides his angst, I think I had more 'cause I thought, I don't wanna do this two years in a row. So last year, if you remember, we were dealing with about a twenty-three percent rate increase tied with very large property deductibles for wind and hail on a per building basis. The latter statement I just made, that has not changed, we still have our large deductibles. But the good news this year is that no coverage changes, actually a little bit of a coverage increase on the property market. Instead of a twenty-three percent increase, we're looking at a four percent increase. Now granted, it's still four percent more and a very big number, I get that, but four percent in the current property market is a fabulous bit. And I will have to commend not only Tri-Cor Insurance John Gibson, who Sean and John and I and Ben work closely with to get our insurance through the company, which is EMC. The reason I wasn't here in May is that, for some reason, EMC changed their strategy in pricing their school renewals. The bulk of schools renewed July first. And I'm not sure where the change of strategy came from, but they revisited July one renewals. And my suspicion is that wait allowed us to deliver a four percent increase rather than a larger increase. So that's my story tonight, short and sweet. Like I said, no other coverage changes, good or bad. Four percent is kind of an inflationary increase. Um, what's the market gonna do between now and next year?
One meeting at a time, Jim.
Yeah, let's, let's do one year at a time, exactly correct. Uh, so I take it as very positive news, at least for school districts right now. We still are hands full with lots of other things, but for the Amory School District, it's a very positive message this year.
I, I do wanna add just a, a couple little, just kind of snippets. Um, first one, EMC, Tri-Cor and Lead Home All continues to be incredibly easy to do it. Not do what, that's a terrible word. To work, to work with. Um, our response times are absolutely insane. I've, I've never experienced anything like it, so I appreciate you guys and Katie and everybody. Um, workers' compensation continues to be a, a, a stick in my, my side. Um, you know, every year Jim and I have had multiple conversations now about ways that we can mitigate that uh, and kind of helps of that, um, and the, 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 the office team knows, the district office team knows that John's always fighting against workers' compensation, not because I don't wanna protect our employees, just because I think we, we have a, an obligation and a, and a responsibility to make sure that our staff are being safe. Um, and yes, that comes with budgetary savings in the long run. Um, but other than that, you know, I was, like Jim said, I mean, I was, the whole month of May, I'm like, oh, this is not gonna be good news. They keep asking for more stuff, they keep asking for this and that and the other things. So four percent increase, I think, is, is about as best as we possibly could have accounted for.
Do we still have that workman's comp for one more year that's adding to our?
We still have a fairly large experience mod, that's what we touched on last year and our mod is still high. Uh, it's a three-year calculation, we have one large claim that's still in the calculation. So the moment that one large claim does fall out of that calculation period, then we'll see, I think, a significant drop in the mod, which then will relate to a significant premium savings.
Do we just have one year left on that, out of the three, or do we still have two years left?
I think it's just one.
Just, I love that, it's just one.
I'm thinking it's one, but see, the way this three-year calculation, it doesn't necessarily mean current year, one year back to you, we could be two thousand, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, even though twenty-four has passed or any twenty-five, so I, I apologize, I don't know what the three-year span is where that current mod. I can get that for you very easily or get it to John and Sean so you know. But it's still there, it's still there.
It's still there.
What's it running? What's, what's the, what's it running?
The, uh, experience mod actually inched up a little bit from last year. Again, it's a very complicated formula, but last year we were at one point five one, which simply means for every dollar of work comp premium you pay, you're paying a dollar fifty-one cents. It went up ten points, it's one point six one.
So a little bit of. Does the number of claims factor into the formula as well?
Yes, it's the number of claims, it's the dollar amount, uh, is it medical only? Is there a lost wage involved? I mean, the summary sheet is three pages, John gets it before I do.
Yeah.
Um, but there's a lot of numbers involved and how they, uh, arrive at that number.
Have we done an audit of the classification of the workers? Well, so what, what, one of the things that we had discussed is EMC will come in and do a work comp audit and check to see, uh, how many years was it, five years of claims that they run through and?
We give you a, a five-year monthly and we can get a ten-year.
Yeah, so that we can kind of drive some of our training and stuff to, to those specific categories and in conjunction. Becky has actually been working with a, um, to make a very long story short, EMC used to provide a service called Vector Training, which is where we did a lot of our district-wide staff-focused bloodborne pathogens, that sort of stuff. They stopped covering that, um, they're, they're gonna come back and cover some of it. Well, in that process, it was, well, three thousand dollars is a better spent on this or something else. And Becky and I took a demo from this other company called Public Works where they've got an insane library of different training resources for us and a lot of them are specific to workers' compensation, trip and falls, slip and falls, um, all that sort of stuff. So we're, we're, we're always looking to continue to kind of do some workplace. The, the thing that I, it still kind of just amazes me is, you know, does anybody know how many staircases we have in this school district of Amory? Just one, that's it, and most people don't even know where it is. Um, so.
I know where it is.
Uh, yeah, so because of that, we're all on one level. So if we have trip and falls, we should be able to train our staff how to walk properly so that they don't trip and fall over sickle bump curbs and that sort of stuff. And so I think that's something that we're gonna continue to proceed with here at the end of the summer, once life calms down.
I think, well, I don't know that you and I are on the same page. I'm asking, have we done an audit of how are? I think, well, I don't know that you and I are on the same page. I'm asking, have we done an audit of how our staff members are classified? Because that's what drives your rating. Right, so somebody who's working, somebody who's a teacher, obviously is a different rating, rating than somebody who's a mechanic.
There's basically three classes, Steve, for the entire school. There's just professional staff, it's non-professional staff, and it's drivers. So, it's pretty easy to decipher who goes where, but then when the work comp audit occurs, which these guys do, and it's certainly not as complicated as the financial law that you just described, but it, it, it's very detailed and rarely is an employee in this class.
Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna piggyback what John was saying. EMC is always willing to send one, two, three people here at no cost to do a walkthrough. Do they have trends for certain kinds of injuries? Can we do some safety training? So, we've chatted about, is that something that the, the school would like? And as John said, when the dust settles and we close out last school year, get the new school year started, maybe this fall sometime. If we want some EMC representatives, loss control folks to come up at no cost, we will certainly make those arrangements.
Jim, what is the linebacker premium?
That's a good question.
What is linebacker?
I wish they would change it.
Is that football?
You would, you would think so, wouldn't you? I don't know where the name has come from, but that's probably near and dear to this board. That is the school board professional liability insurance.
We don't want to eliminate that.
No, I think, that's a pretty important one to keep. Name doesn't describe what it's covering, but maybe it's because we're tough and we'll take care of everybody.
And we were, we were able to shave off one policy this year, which was our, forgive me, it's basically our, our asbestos in mold.
Old and mild at the elementary school.
Yeah, and that was just simply because George, George was like, nope, it's all gone, we're finished.
Yeah, yeah, which came with the old renovations down there. There was a lot, there was a lot of that going on down there, a lot of, a lot of that. A lot of testing, so, good things that happened up there.
Aside from the EMC policy, which is the very large policy for the district, Sean and John and I, Ben, we just, there's three other very small ancillary policies that we didn't present any information for. I'm meeting with Ryan tomorrow. The state of Wisconsin says that the school must have a fuel tank pollution policy at the bus garage. It's a two-year policy. This year, it's up for renewal, so Ryan has already provided us all the information. We just need to get a signature on an application. We have, I see it was on the agenda, we have a cybersecurity policy, that's for all the technology things. That's the second policy, and I didn't realize the, the volunteer policy was so near and dear to your heart, John. It's like four hundred dollars, but that's another policy that if we don't have, if, if someone is volunteering and is technically not considered an employee of the district, so the work comp doesn't kick in. If someone gets hurt, we have another place to go for some recovery. So, the three of us worked through those three minor policies. Change, coverage changes have not taken place, the premiums there are very, very stable, so we're not looking at the massive increases on there. So, we've always done those somewhat after the fact.
The general liability increase is that non-staff-related injuries that drove that, or what is that?
The, the general liability.
The general liability increase?
Yeah, that was the one that was the largest percentage increase, seriously, Steve, I don't have an exact answer. I don't think it was due to anything specific to Amory's results, because we haven't had any large general liability claims. I think what we're seeing is that in the state of Wisconsin, and EMC ensures like two hundred and eighty schools within the state, that line of coverage for all schools is experiencing some difficulty. So, insurance is based on a lot of large numbers, so unfortunately, we're doing well, but we're gonna help the other districts that maybe aren't doing so well. So, I think that the rate increase there is due to public schools in general versus Amory results.
Yeah, I've seen that on my own farm insurance, just general liability going up on all of our land, just in case somebody's there and gets hurt, but you're responsible, and that's, that's a big, it's a big increase, because, just because lawsuits happen.
Lawsuits, so there's a lot of litigation expense, and there's, when someone gets hurt, the medical expenses are very large.
Even though we've never even had a claim, you know, on our own personal farm, it's just part of that that goes up because insurance, no, thank you. All just because insurance, just, that's the game of the game, right, to cover the other people that, if they're not there, lose money, so. And then you do our student assurances.
Nope, that's direct.
That's through John, that's through different organizations.
Yeah, so this would just be for the policy right here, the cybersecurity and everything. I mean, if you want me to talk the cybersecurity really quick, I, I certainly can, and the student assurances. And if you guys just want to vote on one action item, it's you.
We'll take the, we'll do them separately.
Okay.
Any more questions for John on his, what he's offering in this package?
For Jim?
Sorry, Jim, did I say John? Thinking about my dad, sorry, and Miss John, I guess. Got me off tonight.
Sorry.
All right, any other questions on the cyber insurance package? Obviously something that is important these days. I think we've been doing this now for a number of years and-
And we did have to activate it this year, for the first time, because of the Power School down reach. So, we did have to activate it, and it did, did help us, simply because Power School did not make, do good on the promise that they made. And frankly, we just, every, we just got word a couple weeks ago that the people were holding the, Power School ransom, came back for more money, shocker, so. Yeah, so this is, I think, now more than anything, I think this is absolutely critical. The, the rate increase this year was less than, less than five hundred bucks. So, really, by the time it all shakes off, this is one that can save us a ton of money. I mean, it, it saved us about fifty-seven hundred dollars in legal fees this year, just with notifications and tracking people down.
All right.
And his name is Calbell, so it's fun.
I like that.
It's fitting for the area.
Yeah. All right, is there a motion to accept the liability insurance renewal as presented by Jim?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Steve, when it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the insurance liability renewal as presented, is there any further discussion? Hearing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting this, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. All right, motion passed, congratulations. You've got our business another year. And no rocks got thrown at you tonight.
Well, I didn't have any rocks thrown at me last year, I do appreciate that. I'd much rather have base conversations.
I remember holding Sharbat.
I'm pretty low-headed, yeah.
I do, I do have to tell Dale that our buildings did not blow away, and they did not burn down, and we suffered no roof damage, so. That's fourteen thousand bucks.
Truthfully, from a client standpoint, aside from work comp, we had a really, really good year. So, if we can get another year or two like that behind us, that will help.
Then you can bring us options again.
I would love to bring some options, I really truly would. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thanks for suffering it out with us.
No, not a problem.
We need to do the cyber. I, I, I thought we were gonna take that as all together, but the liability insurance and the cybersecurity, but that's okay.
No one's more than that, because that-
That's okay. Um, is there a motion to, go ahead and renew the cyber insurance as well? Steve, is there a second? Larry? It's been properly moved and seconded to also approve the cybersecurity insurance renewal as presented by Jim, is there any further discussion? Hearing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those in fa, all those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Give the cybersecurity to him.
Thank you, sir.
We'll take care of that one also.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks to him. Good night.
I was in a hurry to get you guys out of here, I was working for it.
Hey, we're good.
You might as well stay to the end now.
As much as I would like to, my stomach is wrong when we do that.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make this last one quick. So, student assurance, insurance, I, student assurance services, this is, again, this is a separate policy aside from everything else, and this is essentially to cover medical incidents and medical expenses for all kids who are injured or participating in school athletics, you name it. And it's more or less, kind of the way I always tell the parents when I talk to them about it, it's more or less an out-of-pocket insurance policy. They still want you to submit it through your insurance, and they still are gonna subvert it through there, but it can really help. So, if you look at this, this spreadsheet that's on the screen behind you, again, it's a super healthy year for us. We only had two total claims that actually had to be paid out this past year. I think we had about twenty-seven total reported incidents to them, but there was only two that ended up actually needing to get some bit of, of medical assistance for it. So, I mean, if you're looking at, if you're kind of looking at it, I mean, yeah, if, if you're looking at the, the last snapshot in the last five years, you're like, okay, well, that's less than a fifty percent last run. But then you look at twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and then you go all the way back to twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and it doesn't take more than three blown ACLs a year because of a golfer hole to all of a sudden eat through every bit of that. And I can tell you, number one, they're very easy to work with, parents really just need to follow through on their end. But the biggest thing is their rates have not actually gone up. The variance in price there is based actually on enrollment. So, it's a simple calculation of five dollars per student per year, and it's based off of what last year's enrollment numbers were. So, overall, fantastic policy that you guys have chosen to, to do, and I, I would highly recommend doing it again, because it is incredibly beneficial.
It's way beneficial to our parents in the district. It's, I had a kid that ended up being severely injured in football, and it covered every bit of anything that I had to pay out of pocket. And I have catastrophic insurance, and so it, it was extremely important, it's beneficial. And again, you think of like parents that don't have any insurance or very limited insurance, it's, it's super, super good. It's, it's well worth the twenty thousand dollars in my view.
Make a motion to enact a policy again.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Steve in April, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the student assurance services, insurance for supplemental insurance for students. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, we'll accept the student assurance services again this year. We've already covered the WIAA membership renewal, and now we're moving on to the second reading of policy three forty-five point four five, the fourth grade promotion. Again, Jess, you're up.
So, this is for Act Twenty, we have to have a promotional policy in place by July first. It will go into effect September first of twenty twenty-seven. The reason why that is so far out is it allows us as a district to really focus on what we're saying we're going to do for a student that has not exited personalized reading plan at the end of third grade. So, this lays out, are we promoting them, and what that process looks like to moving on to the fourth grade? One of the things I'm talking about getting in place is for Act Twenty, we have to offer robust reading services next summer. And so, that would have to look like our teachers being trained in the science of reading, using this specific curriculum that aligns with the science of reading. So, again, this is the second reading. My understanding is nothing has changed. I brought you a draft last month, and it looks as it did at the twenty twenty.
How do we see the AGR data that we talked about earlier, with the third grade reading results of the sixty-nine percent at that thirtieth percentile of, how do you see that translating into moving on to fourth grade as it resulted in Act Twenty?
So, for Act Twenty, we have to use the state prescribed screener, which is Ainsweb Plus. So, Ainsweb Plus will actually drive this, we have to use that data to drive this. For any student that is not falling above the twenty-fifth percentile, we then use FastBridge to, to, to look at specific skills that are lacking to be able to determine what do we need to build into a PRP. So, the FastBridge data that we get is extremely useful. We're able to use that as a diagnostic tool, which is actually like a second level of the screener. Part of the process is making the determination if we're gonna promote a student or retain them, or hold them back, is we will be looking at that data. Best practices historically show that there is a large amount of research that says retaining a student actually is more detrimental than having a student go forward. So, what we're saying is a student is down here in third grade, they have not exited that personalized reading plan to meet that criteria academically, we will sit down as a, as a group of professionals and involve parents in that conversation, and we'll look at that data. We'll look at the Ainsweb, but we'll also look at the FastBridge to ensure that they're making progress. If they're not making progress, our student services team, school, school psychologist, Kelsey Cisco, as well as Abby, we would sit down and look at that data, and you would say, is tier one or general education, and, and all the services we're providing, because there's a lot, are they closing the gaps that, like they need to? And if they are, then, then we continue to title, we continue with response intervention time. If they're not, then that will lead to a bigger conversation of what are our next steps? And do, have, have we done enough to support possibly moving forward with a special education referral?
Have you looked at what that would, if, if this was implemented this year, and you had this number of their graders, do you know what that number of their graders, that would have been referred back to be held back, not to move forward? Or what, that, what, that would have looked like, that would have hit that threshold?
We just reported that to, to the DPI. We did have to report that, someone may say, there is no Act Twenty, please, we do still have to report. We have to report the number of students that had a personalized reading plan, how many exited out of it. I can find that actually right here. You know, again, there'd be a large conversation on every single kid, because if they're making progress, even if it's slow progress, we have, through FastBridge and any progress monitoring tool we have, we actually can project when are they going to close the gap with the peers? Is that by the end of this year? Great, let's continue to put the resources, or there are some projections, there are some graphs that will show that they're not gonna close those gaps for several years. That's when then we're having another conversation to say, how long is too long, right? And, and what more do we need to do for this kid to make sure that they can get what they need? I, I can look that up if you want me to.
I'm just kind of wondering, like, where are we at? Obviously, that number's gonna change next year, because it's a different class, it's in third grade, the strategies are different, you have another year and all of those things, so.
You know, and, and there's a lot of research behind, again, is that early intervention is key. So, really, we are a school-wide Title One program, which means we can provide title services by push-in or pull-out. But really, ourselves, as, as well as districts around us, really focus on those interventions, those Title One, key interventions with experts in K through three. Really, if you're not making those, that, that growth by the end of third grade, then, then we need to be looking at this, because it, it's not fair to have a kid have to be entitled for, for four years, right? The Title One support is, is our tier two, it's a really robust system again. If that's not enough, then we have to come back to the table to say, we need to do more. A kid doesn't stay entitled for four years. It's supposed to be a, a boost, an in-and-out boost where kids are flowing in and out, not a sentence for four years where you have to stay there. When I look at third grade, what was reported, so twenty-five personalized, personalized reading plans were started in the winter. So, if you remember, we didn't have to screen Ainsweb in the fall, we had to screen Ainsweb in January. So, based on that data, we had twenty-five PRPs that were started in the winter. Five students exited their PRPs in the spring, and one started a new one, so we would have twenty-one students that were not meeting the data of tags of their personalized reading plan. And again, that doesn't show that they're not making great progress. One of the barriers to Act Twenty and, and the progress monitoring is, is while we're looking at a, a lot of data, there's actually one screener, and two in some other grade level cases that puts you on a personalized reading plan. So, you can be really strong in one skill, but there, we're looking at one score that would keep you in a personalized reading plan, and we know reading is not one avenue. It's a really complex process of a lot of things that come together, like working, to make, to make you look a bit clearer. So, this just lays out for us, this promotional policy lays out, if a student has not exited their personalized reading plan, what are we gonna do? What does that process look like for making that determination of either retaining or promoting them? What I appreciate about our policy is a lot of it engages with, with, with parents, but also with professionals to make the best decisions for the child. also with professionals to make the best decisions for the child.
And obviously, the onus still just lays on the parents at the end of the day, what they wanna do.
You know, it...
In regards to guidance as well, with you guys, but the, the parents have the final say here, right?
I have not encountered that. When I look through our policy on the very last pages, you know, we are saying that it's in the best interest to move, to move a child on. If we met a, a parent that was really adamant that their child was going to be retained, it would be, it'd be a really big conversation, and I have no doubt it would include Abby, it would include our school psychologist, to try to guide them to what would be the best decision for the kid.
So the, the holding them back if they don't re, re, meet that criteria, that's driven by Act 20's text?
We have to have this, this policy to say, what if a kid doesn't exit it, right? They haven't met the academic data to exit their PRP, they need more going into fourth grade. So, yeah, I guess your original question, Steve, wasn't, Act 20 is driving us to create this.
But is Act 20's, is Act 20's text stating if they don't meet that criteria, Act 20 wants them held back, whoever designed Act 20?
No, no, it's not. It is saying, as a district, you need to come up with, A, the criteria to move them on, and if not, what are you gonna, what are you gonna do about it?
Okay.
Right? So it's our commitment to the services we're gonna provide. Act 20, you know, or I should say the DPI, had some examples of promotional policy, so we, we pulled from that, I actually, to build this myself and our Title I team, did go to a CISA full-day seminar, which other districts were there. So there was guidance to us on, on what the DPI wanted us to say and do, so ours really mirrors what they're asking us. So they're not saying, the Act 20 DPI is not saying, you need to hold a kid back. Instead, it's saying, what are you gonna do, and make, what commitment are you gonna make to families that don't?
So, going back to Shar's comment, so approximately 25 students did not complete their personalized reading plan. 21.
21.
21 students did not complete their personalized reading plan. Does this go to what we talked about last month, with us offering the summer enhancement for those students, and having teachers that are trained in the top 10 tools and the science of reading to teach them, okay? And so, is that for every grade, K through three?
Yes.
Okay, and so, going back again to that question, do we feel as a district, that we have the certified staff to meet the needs of 20 students, that's one grade, and assuming these summer classes will be small, do we feel, do we have the certified staff to accomplish this?
I don't think, the question isn't, isn't whether we do, the, it's a statement, we have to.
We have to.
Period. And summer school starting next summer will look a thousand percent different than it looks right now.
When I look at our numbers, we are averaging about 25 students per grade. So right now, I know we have our academic classes and working with more children, we try to keep those around to 10 to 12 kids. So right now, we're running one section of academic classes, we will have to double that, we will have to run at least two, if not three in some grades. Again, eight to 10 students, research shows is really your best small group instruction. I have had conversations with Shawn as the Director of Prickham Instruction to say, we're gonna, this fall, we're gonna have to evaluate our summer school, we're gonna have to incentivize our experts right now, and I'm so thankful, we have a great summer school program, but a lot of our academic classes are run by either retired teachers or teachers from different districts. I want our experts, our trained staff, I want them in front of our kids. Those are our best, you know, resources, best relationships. When we talk about being trained in UFLY, when we talk about all the tools we have in each building, I would love nothing more than to have our teachers sit in front of our kids. And so what does that take to get them here? I mean, they're the most qualified, best relationships, but we're gonna have to incentivize it, and we're gonna have to build a summer school program that really focuses on academics and, and growing that, and, and finding that balance along with the summer fun classes and the math classes, but we, we have to provide these classes for our kids. So I'm looking forward to, you know, how are we gonna look at summer school and do what happens with it?
Now, obviously, that investment that the district made for 20 staff to go to the, the UFLY conference is exactly that, an investment of, hopefully, that we do good enough through the school year, that we don't have so many kids needing the summer school, so that we can save money in the summer school, and, but if not, then, you know, hopefully those are, the people that go to those conferences are also hopefully wanting to be the ones that are going to be inter-reading in the summer, to make sure that these kids are continuing on. So it's an investment in them, and it's also an investment in our kids and the, in for the district, so I hope that conversation is passed along to our staff.
Agreed.
Because those, those conferences are necessarily cheap, and...
Right.
And, you know, we, we're hoping that we get results out of those dollars back, so.
Jess, can we require students to attend this, or it's really the parents' discretion, right?
It is the parents' discretion. We will have to look at how we communicate with parents, but also highly encourage them to attend. And that is, that will be built into their PRPs, the personalized reading plans, is those summer opportunities will be built in there. Right now, our process and how we recommend a student for academic school, look, is, looks different than how we will have to do it moving forward. We're gonna have to have really specific conversations early on, that way we can prioritize those students getting academic reading that they need.
Well, to get this on the table, I believe we need a policy, and it seems like this is well thought out, so I will move to approve it.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the policy 345.45, fourth grade promotion policy per Act 20. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the policy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes, we approve the policy 345.45, fourth grade promotion. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our second reading of our Clubhouse Childcare Compensation and Benefits Guide.
Okay, after many meetings, John here sitting beside me, Gretchen Walberg, Amy Payroll, Becky Schmidt also here, meeting with Clubhouse, I think there's four, maybe five times that we've met, looking at, began last month, and here we are again. Nothing's changed from last month to this month. We simply need to get this done, so we can start implementing the change needed in regards to work schedules and other compensation-related items, because Clubhouse just looks different from certified staff and support staff, just us.
I think it, we did do the, the trading shifts was, was actually added.
On page three, yeah.
On page three.
That is correct.
Yeah, so, and that was something that, that was kind of a compromise from what, from all of the meetings that we've had.
Absolutely.
So that was, we talked about the last time, and so I feel, I feel good about that, that we've honored that request from our Clubhouse people.
Yes.
We have, we have engaged with Rachel, and she processes her process and everything, and we're still, you know, tweaking that, and we will, you know, obviously, it's a, it's a new process, so it'll take some time and everything like that, but it's not a unitary, it's not just us driving this policy. Rachel's, and she's definitely brought some good points to bear to...
I do appreciate, I know that this is kind of a nightmare accounting-wise, that we, you know, that we've talked about that. I appreciate the give of having the two, two ships a year.
Yeah.
That was a, a good compromise between what the employees wanted and, and what you guys were. I know it's a headache, so, thank you. Is there any further discussion? That was really the only change, I believe, that was made this time through.
Yeah.
Okay.
And make a motion to approve the Clubhouse Childcare Compensation Benefits Guide.
Okay, Steve? April? It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the School District of Amory Staff Compensation and Benefits Guide for Clubhouse Childcare for 25, 26. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the Compensation and Benefits Guide for Clubhouse, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, Compensation and Benefits Guide is accepted. Donations to the district.
We have a donation to the district, Eileen and Leslie Markey, figured for your donation of $100, each to the, each to the high school choir and band programs.
Very cool.
Motion to accept that.
Is there a motion to accept Eileen and Leslie Markey's donation to our music program at high school?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, April, is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead. It's been properly moved and seconded with many thanks to accept those, that donation to our great music program. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the donation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed, the donation to the district of $100 from Eileen and Leslie Markey for the high school choir and band programs is accepted and passed. Thank you very, very much, that's very generous and thoughtful. Next, moving on to personnel action.
Personnel, we have new employment contracts for Teresa Fries, library media para, Kimberly Heltney, fifth grade teacher, long-term sub, Erin Hosking, high school English, long-term sub, Joshua Morton, high school football head, middle school, high, middle school football head coach, if I can read here.
Excuse me, it's fine.
Isabella Osterbauer, high school art teacher, Eric Schenkenberg, middle school football assistant coach, Michelle Sigwar, seventh grade math teacher, long-term sub, Amanda Warner, Director of Communications and Community Ed, reassignments, Jennifer Kleinesch from school nutrition food server to special ed para, Wendy Merrick, moving high school art to intermediate middle school art, resignations from Emily Amundson, softball assistant coach, Brenda Crowes from middle school track, Danielle Erdrich for forensics and school play director, Lizzie Reholick, Clubhouse Childcare, Janik Stanek, middle school track, Bill Miller, bus driver, Matt Patterson, softball head coach, and a termination of Maria Livingston, club house assistant teacher.
Is there a motion to accept the personnel actions presented?
I'll make that motion.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead. She can just beat you, Larry. Obviously, we've had discussion about that in closed session, where that was appropriate. All those in favor of accepting personnel action as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Personnel action is approved. I don't see anybody here for community comments, so I'm pretty sure that's a, it's a no. And we do need to just have some housekeeping items in closed session for considering employment promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data, or any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in order to take personnel action pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, one subsection C. Is there a motion to convene into closed session?
I would not to convene into closed sessions.
One, Steve. All those in favor of convening into closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Roll call vote is all unanimous, going into closed session. We are in closed session. Thank you.